Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time is 6 o'clock PM. This meeting of your Pontiac City Council is hereby called to order for September 20th, 2022. We'll begin with our opening question for city council members, in part to allow time for everyone to get settled. So today is National Voter Registration Day, and I want you to share what your earliest memory is of voting or participating in the voting process. This is a day nationally to encourage all those to either update their voter registration or renew for the, or register for the first time. Councilwoman Rutherford, what's your earliest or most formative memory of being a part of the voting process?
It was 2000, good evening, it was 2008, and Bill Cosby came here to speak to encourage people to vote, and he told us to take our grandmother's picture. So I took my daughter and my grandmother, who had just passed that year before, picture into the photo, to the voting booth, and we voted together because my grandmother didn't live to see the first black African, first African-American president, but my daughter and me did, and that was the greatest moment for me.
Thank you. Councilman Nicholson?
I'm gonna say not actual voting, but in second grade, I remember a mock election. Maybe, it may have been first or second grade, I'm trying to think of the years lined up. And I remember I voted for Bob Dole. But, yeah, I, I don't know why, and I'm not sure. Oh, yeah. Who won our mock election, but I don't think it was Bob Dole.
Councilman Goodman?
Yeah, so mine's in a similar vein. I remember in middle school actually voting for myself for student council, back when I was at ATAP, when I was like in middle school. And I won, I became vice president, so I was happy about that. But that's probably the, the main one that sticks out for me.
Councilwoman James?
One of my first voting experiences, I remember voting and working in the Jimmy Carter campaign. I remember, in fact, I was living up here then, and I was campaigning for Carter. And I remember taking a lady to vote and, you know, hope, you know, thinking that she was voting for Carter, but on the, in the car on the way, she said that she didn't have the heart to vote for him because, you know, some, something had happened, they, the Republicans sent like a group of black people to their church, this is history here, to their church, and there was rumor that they were turned away or something, you know, they started an incident to try to detract votes from him. And so this nice little old lady said that she just could not in good faith vote for him because of that incident. So I remember very strongly the Jimmy Carter campaign, yeah.
Councilman Parker?
Good afternoon. My first memory is, well, I became eligible to vote while I was in the Air Force, and so I was down in Texas trying to figure out where the voting places was. So that's my first memory of, while I was in the service.
Clerk Doyle, how about you, man of voting action?
Actually, my first memory was actually going to the polls with my father, so I'm actually going back to the 70s, and when they still had the metal polling levers into the elementary school. So yes, that's my first memory. And I would also say that I was in 1980, the 4th grade, we had a mock election, I was Jimmy Carter's campaign manager. We lost, just like he lost the 80 election.
Legislative Council Sharp, any formative memory?
So early on, I would go with my grandmother to actually vote. That presentation, Our Lady of Victory, I remember that, but in terms of me voting, it was when I went away to college. I voted absentee in 1990, I believe. I was 18.
How about you, Deputy Mayor, formative memory?
I remember being very excited to be able to vote for my candidate during my freshman year at college, because that was 96, and that was the, I was finally, I had turned 18 before, but that was the first time I was 18 and there was an election. So I was very excited.
For me, my first election was in June of 2002. I had turned 18 a few months before, and it was at Mark Twain Elementary in the Pontiac Knowles, when the school was still open, and so it was one of our voting locations. And so being very extra, the first person I ever voted for was myself, because very foolishly, at 18, I had run for Oakland Community College Board of Trustees. And I lost, but I did get to vote for myself.
Good job, sir.
All right, now we, and we've got a few more that have joined us in the chambers this evening. Councilman Parker, can you please introduce this evening's invocation?
Thank you, sir. I would like to introduce to everybody a man who really doesn't need an introduction, the Pastor Douglas Jones of the Welcome Missionary Baptist Church. He will give our invocation this evening.
Thank you. May we all stand, please? Gracious in eternal God, our Father, we come, we praise, glorify, and magnify your name, we exalt your name, for all of your goodness and mercy that you've shown toward each one of us, not only to us, but to our families, our children, even our children's children. We thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank your merciful God for the wisdom that you have imparted upon each one of us. And so, Lord God, as we come together at this occasion, we pray, merciful God, in heaven, not only for our city, but for the residents of our city, and for all of those who are in the listening and viewing audience, that they too may share in the blessing of this prayer, that they too, merciful God, in heaven, may be touched by your almighty hand. We ask you, merciful God, in heaven, to lay your hand of wisdom upon this council, to give them wisdom, to give them knowledge, to give them understanding, to continue to order their footsteps, that they may direct us and direct our city to even better paths. We pray, merciful God, in heaven, for understanding. We pray for our mayor, our deputy mayor, and pray, merciful God, in heaven, that all things that we do here will be pleasing in thy sight. Now bless those that will participate, bless those who will bring knowledge to us that we have not had before. For we glorify and we magnify your name, and we ask all of this, in the precious name of our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
Let's pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. A few names that our community has lost since we last were here. Elaine Forster Rose, Belinda Horn, Eddie Thomas II, and Joan White. We lift their names up, as well as those in your families and in your neighborhoods that you have lost. A moment of silence. You may be seated. Roll call, Clerk Doyle. Carrington.
Present.
Goodman.
Here.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Present.
Nicholson.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Rutherford.
Present.
Mr. President, you have a quorum. Quorum being established, all members present and voting. We move now to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
No move.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Goodman, to approve this evening's agenda. Any discussion, changes, questions, clarification? Hearing none. Roll call on adoption of this evening's agenda. Clerk Doyle. Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Six yays, no nays. That motion carries. We'll proceed, the agenda is adopted, and we'll proceed accordingly. We are now at the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford, seconded by Councilman Goodman, that we approve this evening's consent agenda. It includes two meeting minutes, our most recent regular city council meeting, and then the Economic Development, Housing and Planning Subcommittee meeting minutes. Roll call on adoption of the consent agenda. Clerk Doyle. James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Seven yays, no nays. That motion carries. The consent agenda is adopted. We now move to special presentations. The first scheduled presentation was with Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, their Pontiac chapter, the Lambda Rosetta chapter. They have since announced that they won't be able to join us, but they are continuing national voter registration advocacy, and they wanted to ensure that the community was aware about today's National Voter Registration Day important milestone, to encourage the entire community to update or register so that they can participate in this year's general election about 49 days away, 49 or 50 days away. All right, we move now to our second special presentation, the impact of adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, training opportunity. Reverend Keon Payton, you have the floor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To the president of our council, thank you for this invitation and allowing us to share tonight, to the rest of the members of council, to our mayor and deputy, and certainly to all who are gathered in the residence of the city of Pontiac. My name is Reverend Keon Payton, and I am the senior pastor of New Bethel Missionary Baptist Church, who I have led as pastor for the past 15 years. Born and raised in the city of Pontiac, and have been in ministry for over 30 years. More recently, we have developed and founded an organization called the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice, and I want to share an upcoming opportunity by which we want to invite formally the members of city council, as well as our mayor, and those who might be able to attend this event. But before I do that, let me just share a little bit about the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice. It was Frederick Douglass who said that it's easier to build strong children than to repair broken adults. Have you ever bandaged a wound before it was properly cleaned? Then you know that covering a wound, papering over it, before you've done any work to remove the debris, will only cause that wound to fester. The debris is foreign to your body, and so it must be cleared away before the wound can ever properly heal. The same is true of our emotional lives. When we endure mental trauma, whether it's from being subjected to racism and discrimination in the world, or mistreatment in our own homes, those scars fester for decades, and even for generations. And the younger we are, when we experience trauma, the more deeply those wounds will reside in us. But those wounds are not us. We are not our brokenness, but we are responsible for our own healing. The good news is that groundbreaking research shows us definitely that we can heal from trauma endured when we were children. These adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, may be severe. They can include having experienced abuse and neglect, witnessing violence in our homes or neighborhoods, and even a family member taking their own life when we were young. But even the deepest wounds can be cleared, cleaned, and repaired. Adverse childhood experiences no longer need to hold us back, keep us bound, or prevent us from living a fulfilled life. What's more, now that we more, we more clearly see these wounds for what they are, we also have an obligation to prevent them, so that we truly break generational cycles of trauma that have plagued far too many for far too long. Helping individuals and communities to do this life-transforming work is why the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice was created. The Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice is a community-based nonprofit designed to bring together leaders from government, the faith community, the business sector, and each of us to participate in understanding the consequences of untreated childhood traumas. Maybe you have a heart for healing, and you're moved to better understand how traumas impact us as a community. We have an opportunity coming up on Friday, October the 7th, at the United Wholesale Mortgage, where we have partnered with the Department of Health and Human Services and other agencies to host a training on adverse childhood experiences. ACEs, or Adverse Childhood Experiences, was actually developed from a study that had taken place in the 1990s by Dr. Rob Anda. Dr. Rob Anda, who will also be our featured guest and speaker in person for this training, discovered in the 1990s that substance abuse addictions, violence, sexual addictions, arrests, incarcerations, early deaths, and even suicides are often rooted in untreated childhood trauma. When Dr. Anda did that study, and actually today is still the largest study conducted, with over 17,000 participants who participated in that study, the largest still to date in the United States of America. But when that research broke in the 1990s, people laughed at Dr. Anda and said that his science was crazy, that it didn't make sense, that all the societal problems and ills and prob, and challenges that we have today are related to untreated traumas. Well, today, those of us who've heard anything about trauma-informed anything, the science is rooted in adverse childhood experiences. Our Oakland County Public Health Division, which is actually beginning to lead in the space of trauma here in the state of Michigan, they're well aware of ACEs and their impact in community. Dr. Anda broke the science. On this training on October the 7th, we're gonna have a formal training with Dr. Anda. The training is called a NEAR training. NEAR is an acronym that stands for Neuroscience, Epigenetics, ACEs, and Resilient Communities. When you talk about neuroscience, when a person has been exposed to long-term chronic stress or trauma, traumas impact the brain and actually change the way the brain is wired and functions. You have an opportunity to hear and understand that. When we talk about the traumas that our children are facing, the violence that our kids are enduring, the sexual conflict that often causes many of our children to commit suicide, is often rooted in untreated traumas, where children's brains have been neurologically damaged as the impact, as a result of the impact of trauma. Moving from neuroscience, and Dr. Anda explaining that to us, he'll be talking about epigenetics, where now we know from leading scholars all across the world, that trauma is actually transgenerational. It starts with children who are being formed in the womb, that when mothers who are pregnant are enduring sustained traumas for an extended period of time, that chronic stress releases chemicals in the body, that not only impacts the mother, but also that child in the womb. Many of our children, particularly here in the city of Pontiac, that have been diagnosed with ADD and ADHD, and are being improperly medicated because they've been improperly diagnosed, we didn't know that until this science has broken. And now we know through epigenetics, transgenerational traumas, that it occurs in two different ways. Historical trauma, as African-Americans, we know our history in America with slavery, civil rights, segregation, continued discrimination and marginalization, those are traumas that have impacted our communities for generations, for centuries, and we're still seeing the results of it in communities like Pontiac and other BIPOC communities today. Well, we know this not just through historical, or historical passing of trauma, but also intergenerationally, and I mentioned that a moment ago, with mothers who sustain traumas and it's passed on to their children. He moves on from the neuroscience, the epigenetics, to actually understanding the science of ACEs, and he'll be explaining that as well. But the good thing is, is that even though we all experience traumas, trauma does not discriminate, it doesn't matter if you're black or white, gay or straight, male or female, rich or poor, we all endure traumas as a result of the human condition. The difference, however, is that when you are in a place of economic privilege or economic advantage, you're able to have positive experience of travel, positive experience of going golfing, positive experiences of other positive things that you can do because you can afford it, which helps to counter those traumas. When you are economically disadvantaged, you don't have those same privileges. In fact, as a pastor who've been in this for a long time, the black church, to some degree because of our doctrine and religious fundamentalism, many of our churches have also caused mental illness. And so on this day, on October the 7th, we're inviting pastors, we're inviting our city council members, we're inviting all those who say they are serious about providing positive experiences for children by alleviating adverse childhood experiences and their traumas. This is gonna be an opportunity unlike any that this area has seen. That is why the Department of Health and Human Services are a full supporter and sponsor of this event. We have guests that will be from Michigan, outside of Michigan, leading experts. We have an African-American who leads the Department of Corrections for the state of Pennsylvania, which has now become a trauma-informed state because of Governor Wolf's executive order. The Secretary of Corrections will be present with us to talk about strategies that they've employed in their prison systems, where they're treating people with dignity and respect and humanity, as opposed to the conventional punitive system that most of us have been accustomed to over the years. In addition, we have folks coming from, I can't get into all the guests that'll be there, but we have experts from all over who are coming together for this opportunity, and we hope that the community of Pontiac will come and share in this. Pastors, business leaders, citizens, residents, all of us who know the impact of traumas in our own personal lives and family lives. This is an opportunity for healing, but more important, more importantly, to strategize on innovative ways that we can begin to help ourselves and our young people in cities like Pontiac. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rutherford?
Thank you so much. Good evening. Don't worry. I want to first tell you that it takes great courage to speak about something that makes people uncomfortable, especially in the African-American community, where therapy is sometimes shone important, so I applaud you for that. My question is, is this, how many times a year, other than this, is this event going to happen? And also, if one wanted to get the training, the actual certification, what would one have to do to get involved in that?
All right, excellent question. So this is a one, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, because we're bringing in Dr. Rob Anda. Full disclosure, I'm currently completing my doctoral studies in treating and preventing childhood trauma from Northwestern University. I'm all but dissertation, and I've since become a master trainer of trainers by Dr. Anda and ACE interface, and because of our relationship, he's agreed to come in person to provide this training for us here in Oakland County. So I don't know, you know, to what extent we'll be able to continue to bring him back on a regular basis. But with respect to certifications in understanding traumas, now that I've become a master trainer of trainers in trauma, I'm certified to be able to provide presentations on the core presentation of traumas, and then also for those persons who might be interested in being certified and becoming also trainers of trainers. There's opportunity to be a part of that as well. The state of Michigan, the Department of Health and Human Services, they understand the science, and they're working very hard to engage more persons who can be trained on traumas, so that more of our communities in the state can be aware. The last thing I'll say to that is that because of this opportunity, the Department of Health and Human Services are actually looking to pilot what will happen in Oakland County to replicate in every other county across the state of Michigan. So we often talk about Oakland County leads the way, or Oakland Forward. This is our opportunity to show the state how to do this, how to have hard conversations, and how to also bring innovative strategies that we know work to communities like Pontiac.
Just to follow up, if you will, my other question is, how does one get that information? Like, do you have flyers that we can have, so if we can put it?
Yes, so I did leave the flyers for those who are present. Also, the Oakland Community Health Network, who is our primary partner, we're gonna be offering professional development credits, CEU credits, for those who are social workers or are in the space of medicine. They'll be able to have professional credits as a result of participating in this full-day training. It starts at 9:00 AM. Breakfast will be provided at 8:00 AM, lunch midday, but it's open to all who want, who wish to come and be a part. And then with respect to the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice itself, persons can visit our website at ITEJ.org, the acronyms for Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice, I-T-E-J.org. On that website, we have one-on-one training, there are videos from some of the leading scholars that we have on there. We talk about our services and what we provide as far as training for communities, for governments, for schools, for other industries that want to become trauma-informed, we provide those services as well.
And do you have a digital form of this, so if I would have to put it in all social media outlets that you can get?
Yes, so I'll send Mike, or President of our council, President McGinnis, I'll send Mr. McGinnis the link that OCHN sent out. They're primarily handling registration because of the CEU credits that are gonna be approved, so persons have to go through OCHN to register, but they have a link that they've already made available. I'll send that to the president, and he can disperse that accordingly.
I thank you.
Maybe we can put it on the, on the city's website, too.
I will ask them to do that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? With that, thank you very much for this evening's special presentation.
about something that makes people uncomfortable, especially in the African-American community, where therapy is sometimes shunned and important, so I applaud you for that. My question is, is this, how many times a year, other than this, is this event going to happen? And also, if one wanted to get the training, the actual certification, what would one have to do to get involved in that?
All right, excellent question. So this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity because we're bringing in Dr. Rob Anda. Full disclosure, I'm currently completing my doctoral studies in treating and preventing childhood trauma from Northwestern University. I'm all but dissertation, and I've since become a master trainer of trainers by Dr. Anda and AC Interface, and because of our relationship, he's agreed to come in person to provide this training for us here in Oakland County. So I don't know, you know, to what extent we'll be able to continue to bring him back on a regular basis. But with respect to certifications in understanding traumas, now that I've become a master trainer of trainers in trauma, I'm certified to be able to provide presentations on the core presentation of traumas, and then also for those persons who might be interested in being certified and becoming also trainers of trainers, there's opportunity to be a part of that as well. The state of Michigan, the Department of Health and Human Services, they understand the science, and they're working very hard to engage more persons who can be trained on traumas so that more of our communities and the state can be aware. The last thing I'll say to that is that because of this opportunity, the Department of Health and Human Services are actually looking to pilot what will happen in Oakland County to replicate in every other county across the state of Michigan. So we often talk about Oakland County leads the way or Oakland Forward. This is our opportunity to show the state how to do this, how to have hard conversations, and how to also bring innovative strategies that we know work to communities like Pontiac.
Just a follow-up, if you will. My other question is, how does one get that information? Like, do you have flyers that we can have, so if we can put it?
Yes, so I did leave the flyers for those who are present. Also, the Oakland Community Health Network, who is our primary partner, we're going to be offering professional development credits, CEU credits, for those who are social workers or are in the space of medicine. They'll be able to have professional credits as a result of participating in this full-day training. It starts at 9:00 AM. Breakfast will be provided at 8:00 AM, lunch midday, but it's open to all who wish to come and be a part. And then with respect to the Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice itself, persons can visit our website at ITEJ.org, the acronyms for Institute of Trauma and Economic Justice, I-T-E-J.org. On that website, we have one-on-one training. There are videos from some of the leading scholars that we have on there. We talk about our services and what we provide as far as training for communities, for governments, for schools, for other industries that want to become trauma-informed. We provide those services as well.
And do you have a digital form of this, so if I would have to put it in all social media outlets that you can get?
Yes, so I'll send Mike or President of our council, President McGinnis, I'll send Mr. McGinnis the link that OCHN sent out. They're primarily handling registration because of the CEU credits that are going to be approved, so persons have to go through OCHN to register, but they have a link that they've already made available. I'll send that to the president, and he can disperse that accordingly.
I thank you.
Maybe we can put it on the city's website, too.
I will ask them to do that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? With that, thank you very much for this evening's special presentation.
Thank you.
We move now to recognition of elected officials. Are there any elected officials with us this evening that wish to have the floor? With that, we are now at Agenda Address. President Pro Tem William A. Carrington, are there any requests this evening?
Oh, yes. Thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Chuck Johnson?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, those of you here in the audience and those of you at home watching by television. I'm interested in the agenda item number six. Being a South Boulevard person for a number of years, I've watched the new development, the mortgage company and so on, develop their properties on South Boulevard, and then the multitude of people that are now employed in that area. I know that it has become a traffic situation, and number six is a concern for short- or long-term solutions that the city or someone may be able to address. So my point here this evening would be that we need to start at Woodward going westbound. That's where the bottleneck starts, at McDonald's there. Traffic gets bottlenecked right there, and it can't move, and it's backed up. A lot of people get trapped on the railroad tracks because they're not thinking rationally about being on the tracks. So I would hope that in a long-term solution, that someone would start thinking in terms of moving forward with some kind of development west of Woodward Avenue, widening the road, straightening out, doing whatever. Golf drive needs attention anyways, and that's where all the heavy traffic flows to. So that was on my agenda thought. I do have another thought here, but I don't have enough time to get into it, but that South Boulevard corridor needs some immediate attention. And I hate to say it, I hate to be the whistleblower, but we need more traffic control. Those guys are racing, and I hope the folks at the mortgage company would put a flyer out to their employees. I know it's tough to do, but that speed is not going to work. Somebody's going to eventually get hurt. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Bass?
Good evening. My name is Robert Bass, Director of the Community Assistant District Council. And I'm here tonight to ask about item number six, number five, resolution to approve conditional rezoning and entitlement agreement for 537 Bradford Street. Now, this is Crown Enterprises is a seedment company that came before planning, not last week. Now, my question is, how did it get here? It was the approval for that conditional rezoning was voted down. It was only three of us there to voice our concerns about it. However, it was voted down. So how this week it ended up in council meeting? I need to know that, because if there was an agreement before you took it to a planning for rezoning when we have a ZBA, that's one thing that concerned me. But why, if you already made an agreement with this company for those concessions that they were asking for, why didn't you just tell us that night? Mr. McGinnis was shocked when it got turned down. He made it very clear. He said, what do we do now? Okay, well, what do you do now? That was an opportunity, if there was an agreement already in place for the concessions they wanted for this 62 acres of property, to tell us the public that it was done. Regardless of what the outcome was, it was already done. I've been in two meetings over this past weekend. Last week, I was in a Bloomfield Neighborhood Association meeting. The mayor and the councilperson was there.
That does conclude your
They talked about it. That's my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gloria Miller?
Actually, I want to speak on number six. I had many calls in the last week, and myself going down Martin Luther King, and I too feel that you guys got to do something about that bridge. That really is the spurway out of the city of Pontiac. The traffic, I was in it one day. If anybody gets sick in that lane, they're dead. It was from South Boulevard all the way back down to where my daughter lived, on Up Dyke and Martin Luther King. That traffic was that far. I rode it. I got out of it to ride it. And I had a constituent call me, because they're my best advocate. And she said, you know what, Councilwoman Miller, you go down to the meeting, ask Mayor Grimal to put a sign there at, Chuck mentioned himself, at that McDonald light. We need a turn light there, because that's what holds the traffic up. If you put a turn signal there for present time until the bridge gets back, we can turn left, and that'll clear that crowd a whole lot. So if a turn signal could be put there, I'm going to give Ms. Lewis there, you gave me that idea. I said, that's a great idea, to put a turn signal there so we can turn left to go on Woodward, and that other traffic can go through. Because right now, it's awful. It's going to be bad. It's bad there. It's terrible. And I just wanted to speak on it. When I seen that come through, I was going to speak on it anyway tonight, but you got it on agenda. I think the priority for now is a left turn signal.
Thank you. That concludes our Agenda Address, President.
All right. With that, we are at the first action item, an ordinance amendment. This is a first reading. Any ordinance change, be it new adoption or any amendment of our existing ordinances, requires two readings. This is the first of those two readings. We have a reestablished general employees retirement system, or GERS, as many faithful watchers of city council may know that shorthand, and the federal government has made changes through the SECURES Act, which is an acronym, but part of it requires those that were changing the age impact for the system for all of them across the country. So what had been 70.5 years for those born July 1, 1949 or after, it will be 72 years. So we don't have any leeway on that. That's the federal government mandate, but we have to update our ordinances and our retirement system accordingly, and there's a date deadline, and so we're doing this with time to spare in advance of that deadline. I know that another municipality in Oakland County had this very same decision that they made last night at their city council meeting, so essentially retirement systems throughout the country are having to update their governing documents accordingly. So with that, I want to give the floor to the administration for further information, and I do want to acknowledge that the executive director of GERS, Executive Director Munson, had brought this to the council administration's attention, and I know that Mayor Grimal, Councilman Parker, and other community members represent various different entities on that board and have also provided their feedback that this was something that the system needs to do in order to be compliant with federal law. Mayor Grimal?
Well, I think you summed it up well, Council President, so I don't know that there's a lot to add, other than there's been a change in federal law governing pension systems and some of the actuarial assumptions that they need to incorporate into their financial planning. And ultimately, the pension funds are governed by city ordinance in large part, and so we need to update our city ordinances in accordance with that change in federal law. We've worked with the general employees retirement system, the general pension fund for general employees on this, and this is the first reading of this proposed change in ordinance to comply with federal law. I should mention that we will also need to come with proposed change for the police and fire pension fund as well, and I've started those conversations with the police and fire pension fund as well. This change, under federal law, does not need to be made until 2024, but of course, there's no time like the present to make sure that we're addressing the change in federal law. So that sums it up, and we certainly welcome any questions that council members may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance amendment? It's been moved by Councilwoman Rutherford. It's seconded by Councilman Goodman, so now we have the motion before us. We will not need to vote to postpone it, since it is inherent that we must have two readings. So once this speaker's list is concluded, then we will move on to the next item and pick this up next week. On this motion before us, any discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford?
In January, when we made our rules, didn't we have it where if there was a situation where we absolutely have to have two readings? I'm just trying to make sure. But we did change something. Am I correct?
This is something that is mandated because it's an ordinance.
Okay.
We have that versatility with other motions, resolutions, and items of business where we can allow it to go multiple weeks, but we would then table it
Okay.
For that, they're just by law and by the existing city ordinance, this is one of those instances where it's mandatory.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you for asking. Other further discussion on the motion before us? Hearing no further discussion on this first reading, this matter is done for now, and we'll be back this time next week at our regular city council meeting for the second reading. All right. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation 2022 Highway Safety Improvement Agreement?
Moved by Carrington.
Supported by Rutherford?
It's been moved by Pro Tem Carrington, seconded by Councilwoman Rutherford, that we adopt the resolution. Want to give the floor to the mayor and administration for context. You have the floor.
Well, thank you very much, President McGinnis. This is an MDOT safety grant. I'm going to allow Mr. Cooley to get into all of the details about the background here, but in essence, this is a positive for the city. It's about provision of safety planning funding from MDOT so that we can make sure that we continue to improve our roadway safety here in the city. Mr. Cooley?
Yeah, good evening. So this is, as the mayor stated, it's a safety grant to do traffic signal modernization, and along with that, there'll be new pedestrian crosswalks, ADA ramps, curbing. At several locations on Walton Boulevard, the intersections are Concord and Deerfield Lane, Highwood Boulevard, Jodlin Avenue, and Sterling Lakes Drive. So what this grant will do is give us the ability to upgrade those traffic signals and pedestrian crosswalks at all those locations. It's a $600,000 grant, and then the rest of the 1.174 million will come out of major fund balance that we have already budgeted for.
With that, Councilwoman Rutherford?
Yes. So Ms. Bourne, did you write this grant? Or did you?
I'm sorry.
I'm trying to figure out who wrote this grant.
This was done by our former city engineer, Abdul Siddiqui.
Okay, so you can answer this question. I just want to know, was there any other funds that were actually pursued for the $5,000 or $74,000?
I believe he looked for all funding that he could find, and this is what we come up with.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And mayor and administration, and Director Cooley might be the best one to answer this, but my understanding is that this is very similar to the state and city-partnered initiative that was done along Orchard Lake Road for those new street signs and crossings. Is this the same type of shared action, or is this a different initiative?
Same program, different program year. It was also done, like you said, on Orchard Lake Road there for that corridor, but it was done the year before that for the Baldwin Road corridor as well, at Mount Combe and Kennet and Columbia and Walton Boulevard as well.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Rutherford?
One more question as a follow-up. So I wanted to know, could we use some of that funding for, I know it's for cross, for street crossing, right? Correct?
It's very specific in how it's worded. It's for the safety for the signal modernization, so it has to be used for the signal crossings, the pedestrian crossings, and the ADA crosswalks at these locations.
I was just trying to see if we could use it for the Woodward situation at South Boulevard, so that's why I asked that. Thank you for clarity.
Councilman Nicholson?
At the Orchard Lake and Voorhees intersection, where we've had the accidents that took out that modern signal, is this an opportunity to potentially bulk buy or find some savings to, I know we're looking at trying to bring that crosswalk back?
Yeah, so once they're in place like this, then that's part of our maintenance program, and the Road Commission for Oakland County does that maintenance, and they're in the process of procuring the parts and different supplies needed to put that back in.
Great. Thank you.
I turn now to our Walton Boulevard representatives. Councilman Parker?
Thank you, brother president. My question is, as we looked at this, who selected Walton for this grant issue?
So this was done by the former city engineer, so they looked at several different areas, and this was an area that was marked as needing upgrades and different items through this area.
So did we look at Perry right there with the school, where all the kids are crossing, and making sure that they're safe?
Yeah, so this is an ongoing program that we're working our way through the entire city, so there'll be other grants that come up that will do that as well. But I will note that area.
Thank you. Mayor Grimal?
Well, the other thing that I would note, and I'd look to Mr. Cooley for guidance on this, but depending on what you have in mind there, Perry is a state road under state jurisdiction, I believe, and so we would not be asking the state for grant dollars in order to fix a state road or improve things on a state road. So I presume that when, and again, he's not here to answer the question, but when Mr. Siddiqui applied for the funds, he did so with an eye towards improving city-owned roads that are under our jurisdiction, to the extent that we're seeking to improve Woodward, or Perry, or Cesar Chavez, or here on slash M59, all of which are state highways. That's something that the state should be funding anyway. We wouldn't be applying for state grant dollars in order to fix their roads.
Yeah, that is correct. The only partnership we would have is, say, at Madison Avenue, we would have some partnership with that traffic signal because it also connects with one of the city streets, but the mayor is correct. When we go out and look for these dollars, we look for upgrading city-owned areas that are completely, complete intersections that are city-owned, that we own both streets for the intersections.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption of the resolution to approve the Michigan Department of Transportation 2022 Highway Safety Improvement Agreement, specifically Walton Boulevard.
Hey.
Mr. Cooley?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman? James?
Yes.
McGinnis? Yes. Fickshay? That motion carries. The resolution is adopted. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution to approve the conditional rezoning and entitlement agreement for 537 Bradford Street, Pontiac, Michigan 48341, with Crown Enterprises LLC?
So moved.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Rutherford and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. This is a very substantial matter, so I don't anticipate that we will be voting on it tonight, in part so that the council and the community can thoroughly digest it. Before I give it over to the administration, the question came up in agenda address. The Planning Commission heard this proposal initially in May as an informal presentation and offered concerns about the feasibility and the impact on the residents in the surrounding areas. So when the formal application was made, and it came before the Planning Commission at the most recent meeting in September, a lot of those concerns had been taken into account, and it had the agreement that was proposed, which was discussed at the Planning Commission. The entire agreement is the substance of the proposed conditional agreement change. That was before the Planning Commission. Anything that comes from the Planning Commission when it comes to rezoning is a recommendation. So no matter what the outcome, it has to come here for that final decision. And so when I asked that question, since it was raised, I was asking if an additional vote needed to happen because of the smaller attendance, that there wasn't an outcome that made it where it was a recommendation of a full yes or a full no. But as the legal counsel for the city already confirmed, that means if there isn't a four votes or more, then it essentially is a recommended denial. So that is the recommendation of the Planning Commission, but it comes now to the city council for further review and consideration. And with that, I want to give the floor to the administration for the initial presentation, and then we can begin for this first reading, further discussion and questions. Mayor?
Yeah, thank you so much, President McGinnis. And just to emphasize some of the points that President McGinnis has made. Number one, anything that comes before the Planning Commission in terms of rezoning is a recommendation. It's not a decision. That's in contrast to items that come before the Zoning Board of Appeals, where the Zoning Board of Appeals is the ultimate decision-making appellate body. And what the Zoning Board of Appeals says typically is the final word on it. In contrast, the Planning Commission is an initial body that makes recommendations, but those recommendations then proceed to city council. In this case, we had a vacancy on the Planning Commission as well as an absence from that meeting. So there were only five Planning Commission members there. The way that the proposed vote was structured in the Planning Commission packet is that the Planning Commission had the option to either move for an approval or to move for a recommended denial. Planning commissioners made a motion for approval. That was not passed. Two Planning Commissioners voted yes, three voted no. Nobody on the Planning Commission actually made a motion to deny it. And so there was no majority vote taken for either of the two positions, approval or denial. We're now here tonight to make a decision on the matter, not this evening, but, but in the next week or so. But this is now before the city council for a decision on the matter. And it's important to note, again, in reference to the speaker earlier, that the city has not entered in to any agreement. There is a proposed agreement involving this property. But the city will only enter into the agreement if city council votes in favor of moving forward with this. So I haven't signed anything, city council hasn't signed anything, because all of that has yet to be determined based on whatever vote city council makes. The concept, and I'm going to allow our Community Development Director, Rachel Lockren, to get into more details, but the concept here is pretty simple. That the property behind United Wholesale Mortgage, north of South Boulevard, is largely zoned M1, meaning it allows for certain manufacturing uses. Some of it is owned R1 as well. The owner of that property is requesting that a portion of the property owned be rezoned to M2 in order to allow for the construction of a concrete mixing facility that mixes cement, which is pre-made and manufactured elsewhere, to be mixed with sand and gravel and limestone into the liquid concrete mixture that is supplied to sites, including road sites, to pour concrete. This is not an asphalt plant, which is a very dirty process that involves petroleum products. It is also not a cement plant itself, which is one of the ingredients in concrete. But cement, like I said, is manufactured elsewhere and will be brought to this plant already in a pre-made form. What the owner is saying is that in exchange for the rezoning and the allowance of a construction of the concrete plant, which by the way, will create a lot of new, good-paying jobs, and I know that we have a representative of the Teamsters Union here this evening who will be speaking to some of that. But in exchange for allowing for the rezoning, they will donate 65 acres of land to the city adjacent to Murphy Park, which will about double the size of Murphy Park and will be very likely to address a longstanding parks deficit that the city has had. Because of decisions made in the past by past elected officials going way back to the year 2000, as well as the emergency manager, the city took parkland that had been improved by federal and state grants and sold that land for non-park purposes. That created what's called a parks deficit, which has effectively disqualified the city from receiving any state or federal grants for many, many years. And so we have not been able to get state or federal grants to improve our parks, to provide recreational programming. It has been a huge challenge as the city has sought to improve and better maintain our parkland. And so in order to address that parks deficit, and it's 28 acres of parkland that was converted impermissibly in the past, in order to address that 28-acre park deficit that has prevented us from getting those parks grant dollars from the federal and state government, the city needs to acquire a substantial amount of parkland that is equal to or greater than in value to that 28 acres. This 65 acres, we believe, will very likely resolve that parks deficit. There's a whole process that has to be gone through with the federal government that may take about a year in terms of assessing that. But the fact that we're talking about receiving more than twice as many acres as the amount of the deficit makes it very likely, based on our conversations with the state DNR, and Alex Borngesser, who's here, has had a lot of those conversations, makes it very likely that this will address that parks deficit and once more allow our city to finally get grant dollars from the state and federal governments to improve our parks. And it does so without the city having to use taxpayer dollars in order to buy the land. That can be a very expensive process. There's a parcel of property that's less than 20 acres that's for sale, for example. It's similar in character, that is for sale for a million dollars. So if you think about, it's, it would likely cost the city and our taxpayers millions of dollars in order to acquire a sufficient amount of property to address that parks deficit. And here, in exchange for agreeing to a rezoning of property that will create many good-paying union jobs, we will be given acreage for free, without the taxpayers having to pay for it, that is likely to address that parks deficit. So the administration strongly recommends that we ultimately approve this. I know a vote's not going to be taken this evening. But without further ado, I want to turn it over to our Community Development Director, Rachel Lockren, to get into additional details.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Can everybody hear me well enough? We had an issue with this before.
You can just take it off. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
There we go. Okay. Well, Mayor Grimal, oh, sorry. First of all, thank you for letting me present before you this evening. Mayor Grimal has just done a great job of going through the overview of this project. So there are a few additional items that I would like to just bring to your attention to try to bring clarification to the project. The site includes approximately a 9,100-square-foot building that will be an enclosed concrete plant. So they will enclose the mix equipment and the majority of the operations. The building height at the peak of the roof is 55 feet. There are two exterior silos that will reach the maximum of 90 feet, and that is just the two silos, not the rest of the building. In addition to the concrete mixing building, there will be an aggregate hopper with conveyors installed to move the aggregates from five-to-12-foot-high outdoor storage stockpiles into the plant. The outdoor aggregate storage stockpiles will be screened by a 12-foot concrete wall. Each delivery truck will be washed before leaving the plant, and concrete wash basins will be installed to process the washout water from the delivery trucks. Parking of approximately 35 ready-mix delivery trucks plus employee parking is proposed as part of this application. The proposed facility will create 50 new jobs within the city of Pontiac, including local 614 Teamsters positions. These jobs will be both entry-level and skilled-in nature. The applicant will hold job fairs within the city, making it as convenient as possible for Pontiac residents to apply. Dust collectors used at this facility have the necessary EPA approvals for this type of use and will collect all dust inside and out of the facility as aggregate is being loaded into the plant. The acreage that is zoned M, or I'm sorry, R1, and that's why this diagram is up here. So you can clearly see which areas are R1, and those are the ones represented in the yellow color. The areas represented with the dark gray are the areas proposed, or, propose, or are M1 right now and will be rezoned to M2 along with the yellow areas. But this is important to note because you could say rezoning from R1 to M2 is a very large step in zoning practices. But if you look at the actual situation that we have, the R1 sits behind the M1. So you would literally have to drive through industrial uses to get to your home, which is not typically how we would lay out a community. So it doesn't make sense to keep the R-run areas zoned for residential uses when you would be immediately adjacent to industrial uses and have to traverse through those industrial uses to get to your house. And lastly, I have a note about the mitigation, and I'm going to turn it over to Alex. The 28-acre conversion issue with the MDNR will begin to be resolved. As a result of the approval of this conditional rezone application, the applicant will be dedicating 65.4 acres of land to the city. The city is required to replace the loss of 28 acres of parkland that is associated with the use of MDNR funding. Until this loss of land is resolved, the city is not eligible for MDNR grant funding, as the mayor has already said. The loss, this loss of funds could range from the thousands into the millions of dollars. And that's on a yearly basis. Every year, you can reapply to the MDNR for money. So just because you got some money last year doesn't mean that you're out for the next year. So this could become a, this is, in fact, a large loss for the community right now. And I will turn it over to Alex.
Thank you. So the mayor and Rachel outlined the issue that we face with our park deficit pretty eloquently. So I'll be brief. But as you know, the city is currently in a park deficit with the DNR and the Land and Water Conservation Fund of 28.1 acres. This presently presents a problem for my body of work because we are, we are technically eligible for applying for DNR grants, but we are scored roughly 50 points down on every application, making my application void before it even hits someone's inbox. This prevents us from acquiring resources for redeveloping our park, our parklands and all of our outdoor green space amenities for residents. This is problematic for grantsmanship, and it's problematic for the community. This proposed project would, or conveyance of land would optimistically resolve that problem. 65 acres far exceeds the amount of our park deficit, and it would require what has been communicated to me as a year-long process that would require appraisals and various other measures and applications with the DNR and the National Park Service, but would ultimately resolve this issue and put us in compliance with the DNR and allow us to apply for grant funding from the DNR. And that would allow us to improve our parks and our green spaces, participate in placemaking, clean water initiatives, lots of environmental and conservation activities through those grant programs that we are otherwise ineligible for at this time.
Thank you, Alex. We do have Crown Enterprises here tonight to present to you a PowerPoint that they have put together to further describe their project and outline how it's going to lay out in the community. So we would like to present that to you at this time.
Please, please prepare that. But in the interim, Pro Tem Carrington, you had a specific question?
Yes. How you doing? Thank you. It sounds like a great project. Well, what were some of the reservations from the Planning Commission? Because I was just giving this right before we came in, so I don't know exactly what the reservations were.
Yes, sir, I understand. Some of the reservations from the Planning Commission were building height and the use of this use being placed where it is. The building height was described to the Planning Commission as being 90 feet tall in their materials. I didn't see where there was a better description of the exact roof height of the building, which is 55 feet. So calling the building a 90-foot building isn't exactly fair. There is a portion, there are two silos that you, that will extend above that 55-foot height, and those two silos will hit the 90-foot mark. But the entire building itself is at 55 feet. The use in this area is a concrete mix batch plant, and that is a heavy industrial use, and that's why it requires the M2 zoning, which is our heaviest industrial district. I can understand the concern over that use as we are rezoning R1 to allow M2, but as you saw in that diagram, that land will not develop as single-family residential with M1 right next to it, which is its current condition today. So rezoning the entire area to M2 actually cleans up the, the mixed zoning in that area. United Shore has spoken to Crown Enterprises about this proposition, and they are in support of this application. They are the closest neighbor other than Crown Enterprises Trucking Operation, which is immediately to the south.
Thank you.
We've got four questions and building. Does this council want to hear the remainder of the presentation? Or do questions and then the balance of the presentation?
So I want to ask this question because it's pertaining to two things she said, and then we can hear the rest, if that's okay with you.
You were next on the speakers list.
Okay.
Councilman Rutherford.
First question is, you said there were 50 jobs, but in the contract it says 70, so is it 50 jobs or 70?
I will have to defer to Crown Enterprises to clarify that.
Number two, the jobs are paying at $30 an hour, correct?
That is what I believe, yes. Thirty, up to $32 an hour, I believe.
Okay. So to, to ask the last question is, they want to build a temporary batch plant, that is correct. And are they going to dismantle the batch plant once they build the permanent batch plant?
I will also have to defer to Crown on that due to it being an operational question.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so for, okay, do we want to continue with the presentation? And then we'll resume the speakers list, legislative council Sharp, Councilman Nicholson, Councilwoman James, Mayor Grimal to that.
Just to the last question, the contract is very clear that it allows for the construction of the temporary batch plant for 12 months. So after the expiration of that 12 months, they will no longer be allowed to operate it, and we will ensure that it comes down no later than that 12-month mark.
Thank you for your clarity.
All right. Community Development Director Lockren, if you can introduce the continued presentation.
I'm sorry, this is Cheryl from Crown Enterprises, and she will present the PowerPoint to everybody.
Understood.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I have a problem with that, too. Good evening, thank you for having us. My name's Cheryl Jordan. I'm the legal director for Crown Enterprises. I'm just going to do a short introduction, and I'm going to hand it off to the folks that really have the technical answers to the questions that you most likely have. I did work with the city attorney to draft the conditional rezoning agreement. I will add that the form was the city's form, so it wasn't our form. It was largely negotiated by the city's attorney. But I'm Cheryl Jordan, Legal Director of Crown Enterprises. We are the commercial real estate development firm for our affiliated companies, one of which is Zeus Concrete, which will operate the concrete plant at the site. We also have Dan Anifer over here, who will come up and speak about the technical issues, permitting, construction, design. He is the Senior Construction Director for Crown Enterprises. I have Dan Stamper, who is the President of Zeus Concrete, and Gary Kelly, who's the Vice President of Zeus Concrete. I'm actually going to invite Gary up to tell you all about the concrete operation and everything about it.
Thank you, Cheryl. Yes, please. Zeus Concrete is a development that includes a fully enclosed-
Don't be shy about the microphone, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Zeus Concrete is a, a development that includes a fully enclosed ready-mix concrete plant, employee parking, and dust-controlled aggregate storage. This development is located on eight acres of our property, which also offers special benefits to Pontiac and its residents, as, as we've heard. And they're going to be discussed later in our presentation. And they're going to be discussed later in our presentation. We expect to employ around 50 employees, new employees, including unionized Teamster truck drivers under a Teamster agreement. We will hold two job fairs at the site before construction is complete and expect that most, if not all, employees will be from this area. We are prepared to hire experienced and non-experienced employees that we will train. There are governing rules by DOT regarding truck drivers that we must adhere to, but are prepared to help new employees meet those requirements also. We hire and train our employees from the local community, and I'd like to introduce Stefan Lewis, who we recently promoted to one of our Detroit plants, who started with us as a batch person, batching concrete, and now has recently been promoted to plant manager. And I'd like to give him a moment to mention how his time is working with us at Hercules Concrete.
Good afternoon, or evening, everyone. I recently just got promoted to plant manager of Hercules Concrete downtown Detroit area. This is probably the best company I've worked for. I didn't have too much experience coming in, but I was a hard worker and stayed late, came early, did what I could, asked all the questions I could, and I was greeted with all the advice and knowledge that I could gain. I've been with the company for a very short time, to be honest, and the opportunities are endless. One of the main reasons I decided to come to this company was I was told in my interview, if I'm not good at this particular position, there's a plethora of positions that can open up. So we would deem, they would deem fit for me to go somewhere else. So there's always employment. They don't believe in just letting people go. They're real hands-on with their employees and training, and they're always about the community and development from within, promoting from within. And I've had the greatest time since being with Zeus and Hercules Concrete.
Thank you, Stefan. And we are very, very proud, proud to have you with us and appreciate everything you do for us. As you can tell, this is not your grandfather's concrete plant. This is new technology. This is completely enclosed with the latest, newest dust control equipment. If you can go to the next slide, please. These dust collectors are 99.9% efficient in their operation, and that material that's collected through the dust collection system is then recycled back into the concrete, not into the atmosphere. If you can go to the next slide, please. As mentioned previously, once the concrete trucks are loaded, they are thoroughly washed before leaving the plant, including the tires, which eliminate tracking of debris onto the local streets. There in the red, you'll see that is the enclosed concrete facility. To the left of that is the water recycling system, where the trucks wash, and it captures all that water, and then the water has been recycled back through the process. The project will also include landscaping around the perimeter of the entire site. And it also has a 12-foot aggregate screening wall, as you can see at the top on the north side there. There's a 12-foot wall along the entire property line, and those aggregate piles are 12-foot or less. And they have dust suppression systems above the aggregate piles that mist water to cool and condition the aggregates to SSD, which they are required under our specifications. Sustainability, recycling, and being a good citizen to our environment is also part of our commitment to this community. We will accomplish this by recycling CO2 emissions into the concrete, along with recycling the water and cement back into our concrete products as permitted. With that, I'd like to introduce Dan Onifer with Crown Enterprises.
Good evening. I'm-- Yeah? Yep. I'm Dan Onifer with Crown Enterprises. Thank you for the opportunity, and thank you to the mayor and city staff for doing a nice job of summarizing where we've been. And as council can likely tell, there's been a lot of history on this project over the past, going back to springtime. And as Council President McGinnis mentioned, we've been before, or commissioned, two times. And at those meetings, at the initial meeting in particular, Commissioner McGinnis at that time did voice what we considered to be critical open-mindedness. He voiced his concerns, and he challenged us to provide the solutions. And we've been working hard to do that. And another thing that was discussed at Planning Commission was Crown Enterprises' long-term ownership of this property. This goes back to the '70s. It's been, since that time, it's been the home to central transport as a LTL carrier of common freight. In 2006, we did a very large renovation and expansion to the facility to, at the time, be a real estate component to Universal Logistics that was supporting General Motors. Since then, that warehouse portion of the project has been leased to Turnus Packaging, and they're serving Ford Motor Company. So this property, as it stands today, is very well-developed, very well-maintained, and fully occupied in serving the local community and providing that service from this property. And what we're here tonight to talk about is, in part, the site plan that we're seeing here, and Gary's done a nice job of mentioning a lot of the features that enhance this over a typical concrete-mixed plant. And one of the things I can add is that Gary's mentioned a lot of truck cleaning, truck washing, and water. And we can't safely do that in the winter without some type of control. And this yard is fully paved in concrete, and much of this concrete is heated. There's a halo around the building. There's this water wash basin to the left of the building, and that area, it's a heated slab. And as Stefan mentioned, the company supports its employees, but it also supports this development. And there's been nothing spared in providing state-of-the-art equipment, state-of-the-art innovation. This is our third effort at building a plant like this, and we've learned a lot on the first one, and these items have been refined and enhanced, and we're getting a little bit better product here. So we welcomed the opportunity to present this to commission, and we heard their concerns. And as the mayor summarized, we did get some support at Planning Commission, and we took that, we valued that input, and we're here tonight to ask for support on this project. Now, if we can go to the next slide? We've talked a lot about the merits of the project, but we're also sensitive to the fact that there's, it's in an area that requires some sensitivity. And what this slide shows is the proximity or isolation of the project itself. Now, keep in mind, this is to the perimeter of the project and not the enclosed plant itself. But you can see that there's more than 1,400 feet of clearance from Martin Luther King Boulevard, 1,500 feet from South Boulevard, over 3,100 feet from Updike, and 3,200 feet from Auburn. So even though the project in itself is developed and in a way that we feel is an asset to the community, it is still isolated in this way. So with that, I will, I'm going to turn it back over to Cheryl. She can summarize the highlights of the agreement, and we're available for any questions council may have. Thank you.
Dan, while you're up here, a question came up. To address the temporary facilities that will go up during the first 12 months, can you explain how we remove those facilities? Is it a long decommissioning, demolishing process, or can you--
Gary may be able to better describe it, but they are, they're mobile plants. That you see them, they're mobilized a lot of times for highway projects. And in this case, we would prepare a pad on the property adjacent to, but not on, the project site to support, but not interfere with the project construction.
Don't know if you can add anything?
Yeah, just to add to that, timeline-wise, it takes us three to five days to either erect a plant or to dismantle and remove a plant. So the answer is about three to five days to move a plant.
Thank you. I'm not sure, Council President, if we should take questions about the construction, design, concrete, before I move on. The remainder of the presentation deals largely with the donation of the parkland.
You'd like to keep going? I'd like to do questions now.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilman Nicholson is next on the speakers list.
So this is something you've done before, but you've learned along the way. The Hercules plant, is it very similar to the plant you're proposing?
I'll let Dan answer. I think the answer is yes.
And a related question, you've mentioned before the Planning Commission that there's currently one in Novi that's being constructed as well, just if you can bring us up to speed on some of your other related facilities.
Firstly, to get my Greek gods and goddesses correct, Hercules is a bit different because it was the initial effort. Titan is the plant that's completed. It's in Centerline, and it is very much like this. And I'll speak to some of the differences and refinements. Currently, we have a Pegasus under construction in Ypsilanti Township. We've got Medusa in front of-- Can't forget the goddesses. We've got Medusa in front of Novi Planning Commission next week, and that's been supported by planning staff. So we'll be looking for planning commission support of Medusa in Novi. And to answer your question specifically, the Titan construction in Centerline, it is very similar to this, but the plant enclosure itself is slightly larger because there's some what's called ground storage of cement, just to increase the production and enclose that in the building. And we learned that we had to expand the footprint slightly in order to make the truck movements efficiently in and around mainly the wash basins. But other than that, it's very similar to what we're proposing here in Pontiac.
Would you be adverse to council members being invited to tour that facility?
Not at all. We did invite Planning Commission. I don't think there were any commissioners were able to make it. United Wholesale Mortgage was invited. They did take advantage of that. And very similarly, Ypsilanti Township made the same request, and they wouldn't even put it on the Planning Commission agenda until they got comfortable. So they did visit the site in Centerline, which was under construction at the time, but they were pleased with what they saw, and we got unanimous support by the Ypsilanti Township Planning Commission. Yes, we could fully accommodate that.
I'm sure a few of us would definitely be interested in going, and I'll have room in my car if any members of the public feel concerned or want to ride with.
Legislative Council Sharp?
This is, these are procedural questions, not substantive at all in terms of the project. Just going back, so was this in fact heard in front of the Planning Commission or not? So was there a yes to the recommendation or a no to the recommendation?
Planning Commission had it before it at the September 7th meeting, I believe, is the September regular meeting of the Planning Commission. The motion was to recommend or for approval, and it did not have sufficient votes. And so there was no motion to deny. We asked legal counsel, and the response was that because it did not have sufficient number of votes for approval, it serves as a recommended denial. So the Planning Commission considered the matter, and their recommendation to this body is denial.
Okay. Because to the Pro Tem's earlier question about in terms of what the Planning Commission recommended, generally, what's given to the council obviously is a detailed kind of analysis in terms of these, Planning Commission going through the steps and different requirements in terms of the rezoning. So you don't quite have that before you. So I guess my question is for the council, you know, are you going to continue to proceed regardless of not having that recommendation before you?
We do have the documentation from the Planning Commission meeting, and that's something that we can review further ahead of next week's sort of essentially second reading. And that's something that we can always make available further. But you're certainly right, the most often instance is that the Planning Commission recommends approval, and with that, they have sort of their bullets of the pros and cons. So every recommendation from the Planning Commission includes sort of, from staff, they prepare for the Planning Commission sort of, here are some individual items that causes us to say that it would not comply or it does comply based on non-contiguous zoning, other sort of categories. So we do have that information from the Planning Division staff that the Planning Commission received, that the full council can have access to or already, depending on members, has seen.
Because as you know, as a council, you have the opportunity to accept, reject, or send back. So regardless, you should have that in front of you. Thank you.
Next on the speakers list was Councilwoman James, Councilman Parker, Councilwoman Rutherford, Councilman Goodman. Okay. Councilwoman James.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to preface what my questions by saying that I don't think anyone here is more excited about the total project, the total proposal than I am. However, I do have some concerns about relative to pollutants and to environmental. So what I'd like to know, if I'm understanding this, you plan to start with some temporary facilities for one year. And I'd like to know what is, you know, in terms of those temporary facilities, what's the plan to be able to maintain quality, environmental quality for that year, that you're going to have a temporary facility there? And when you get the final building built, which you've said is going to be state-of-the-art, have some of the newest technology incorporated in that, what is, you know, what do you estimate your CO2 to be, you know, once that final building is built?
A few questions. I'll let Gary speak to the temporary plant.
Okay.
Thank you. The temporary concrete batch plants are very similar in nature to the exact equipment that will be installed, less the enclosure. They do have the dust control systems, the dust collectors on the plants, and we do, you know, spray our aggregates and control our dust as we would under a permanent facility. So they're very similar plants, excuse me again, without the enclosure. And we're always under the guidelines of our SWIP plans and our environmental plans that we have to follow, fugitive dust plans and such, as governed by the state of Michigan and Eagle.
Do you know what the standard is, that what, you know, what it is that you're supposed to be able to maintain to for your CO2?
For our CO2 emissions?
You know, however you measure.
No, I don't. I'm not sure of that.
Councilman Parker.
Thank you, Vice President. My question is along those same lines, because I was concerned about the hazardous waste and safety. You mentioned that you wash your cars. Do you drive them as well? Because when you wash them, there's still going to be residue on them as they leave, right?
The trucks are rinsed and they're rinsed at what we showed as the wash basin, which is a recycling system. And the way it's configured is there's a, there's an arch with the sprayers that spray, especially at the strategic locations, because the issue that's being addressed is some of the residue that may be on the outside of the vehicle as it's being loaded inside the plant. So there's very specific locations where this, the product's being introduced to the truck that is highly sensitive to this cleaning. So the spray nozzles are mainly to address that, otherwise the truck is clean. So that rinsing is done in the open air on the surface, but that surface water drains into this same clarification basins that's part of this water recycling system.
And you have a catch basin to catch that runoff that it doesn't get into the groundwater system?
Everything goes into the wash basin and there's no discharge to any public utility, no off-site discharge from that. If it does get overwhelmed by rain, which would be the only thing that would overwhelm it, it would be managed in some other way in totes. But none of that is discharged off-site.
And how do you anticipate handling noise?
Most of the noise is the plant equipment itself, and this is an enclosed building. Otherwise, it's, it is the trucks traversing through the property. But I'll point out that, and I mentioned briefly about the history of the, of the site and Crown's ownership. And currently, it's a logistics facility. It's got a cross dock and it's got a 300,000 square foot warehouse. And all of this activity is tractor-trailer driven.
Yeah, but tractor-trailers bring noise.
Yes, sir, understood. But it's, it's an industrial use, an industrial that's consistent with the current property. And we're happy with the performance of the existing property.
Sir, you may want to elaborate, Vice President, on, I think that's your title, right? That you shared to the Planning Commission because that same question came up and that the U.S. Department of Transportation regulates those particular vehicles and is pretty stringent with it in terms of washing both at its, prior to its departure, but then also at its destination before it leaves the sort of off-site, if you want to elaborate further.
Yeah, in every city, every county, every state, you're not allowed to put dirt and mud onto the roadways, right? It's against the law. So what we do in our facility, just to explain a little bit further about the ready-mix concrete plant, we are a ready-mix plant, which is a central mix plant, which is a wet batch plant, where the concrete is fully mixed in the concrete drum that's attached to the plant, and then it's dumped into the ready-mix truck. Therefore, there's no dust in a wet batch when it's entering into the vehicle. Also, there's no dry rocks and sand and debris overflowing onto the vehicle that we'd be carrying out on the roadways. So we are wet batched and once loaded, the truck is very clean and it goes over to the, as Dan had mentioned, the spray system to wash the vehicle. That is connected to our wash down pits, so it's angled toward those pits. So any water, if there were to be any residue, would wash into those wash pits. So therefore, our vehicles are very clean when they leave our yard, and we appreciate that because we want a clean yard also. And we don't want track out on the street because we would get a ticket if we had track on our street. The other thing I should mention is we do have an aggressive sweeping program in our yards because we are a fully paved site, just like any other business that's fully paved, they have sweeping companies that come out and keep their properties clean. We pride ourselves in clean trucks, clean plants, clean properties. So I wanted to mention that. A lot, and to further give detail on the concrete business, the dirt and debris and things like that you mostly see on a concrete truck is from a job site. It's not from the facility. It's what happens once they go off-road or they bring it to your house or in your backyard, do your patio, you know, they get mud or whatever. But again, they can't leave that job site until they fully rinse their truck from debris and get the mud off the tires and make it neat and clean to end of the roadway, or we'd get a ticket. So we do our best to try to maintain a neat and clean professional business.
Thank you. Mayor Vrymo.
Yeah, the one thing I want to emphasize too is that, and the folks from Crown mentioned this, is that already, and those who have been in that neck of the woods are familiar with this, already between United Wholesale Mortgage's, what I'll call their main building, although I don't know if it's their main building anymore, but it was their initial building anyway, between United Wholesale Mortgage's main building there on the north side of South Boulevard and the United Wholesale Mortgage Sports Complex is a large property that serves as a trucking terminal for central transport. That's already in operation. So when they talk about the fact that there are already semi-trucks traversing two streets, actually, on either side of that truck terminal, Bradford on the west side, and then Meadow and Centerpoint on the east side, what they're emphasizing is that the additional concrete trucks are not a different use and kind than the existing semi-trucks that are already traveling on those roads. Now, it's important to mention in this vein that Crown Enterprises wants to make sure to be good neighbors to United Wholesale Mortgage, and nobody values United Wholesale Mortgage's investment in our community and employment in our community more than we do. And so it's really important to us that this be done in a way that United Wholesale Mortgage is comfortable with. And one of the asks of United Wholesale Mortgage is for the city to vacate that Bradford Road, which is the road that currently separates the main building of United Wholesale Mortgage from that Crown Enterprises trucking terminal. And there are a number of procedural steps to doing so. Doing so would actually save the city a considerable amount of money because we wouldn't have to maintain the road anymore in the winter, we wouldn't have to pave the road, and the road is currently in need of paving. And we wouldn't have to maintain streetlights on that road, we wouldn't have to maintain the stormwater sewer along that road. And certainly, Mr. Cooley can speak more to that. That's a whole process in and of itself in terms of vacating a road. But that's important to United Wholesale Mortgage because they'd like to avoid having concrete trucks on that road as well as the existing semi-truck traffic. They'd like to avoid that being on that Bradford Street. The other component to this is that Crown Enterprises and United Wholesale Mortgage and the city have agreed to try to see if the state will provide funding to construct a new roadway solely at state expense out to Updike so that the truck traffic from the concrete plant would not have to utilize South Boulevard at all. Now, I've made it clear that, you know, if for some reason the state doesn't come through with that funding, the city certainly is not going to pay for that roadway, and everybody understands that. But if we're able to create a new roadway out to Updike, that obviously would be a big plus.
Speaking for a second time, Councilman Rutherford and then Councilwoman James.
Okay, two questions. This is to Mayor Vrymo and to you guys. You just stated that you're going to go for state funding and that if it isn't agreed that we wouldn't as a city pay for it. Is it in writing that Crown Enterprises will be paying for Bradford Street if we do not have the funding? And if so, can it be put in this contract? Because currently, that's not in here.
When you say for Bradford Street...
So, for example, where United Wholesale Mortgage is, that would be parcel two. I just sent a text, I don't know if y'all sent it, but I'll read it to you again. There's a parcel two that's between United Wholesale Mortgage and the Crown Enterprises, excuse me, and that if we change that to M1, so would that then make United Wholesale Mortgage responsible for Bradford Street? Or would that make Crown Enterprises responsible for the repair of Bradford Street?
Well, Bradford, there are really two scenarios there. The one scenario would be that Bradford remain a public street, but the request from United Wholesale Mortgage, which we think makes sense, is to vacate that street. And once that street is vacated, it would no longer be a public road. And the city would have no responsibility for maintaining, paving it, or anything else. It would solely be United Wholesale Mortgage's responsibility. That vacating of that road is a whole separate process that we would be bringing before City Council in the future, perhaps as soon as next week. And it would be in those documents that it would make it clear that United Wholesale Mortgage, if we were to vacate the road, would be solely responsible for future maintenance.
Okay. So, and to just piggyback off that, just so that I have that clear, I asked a question earlier and I still haven't gotten the answer, is it 50 jobs or 70 jobs? And also to piggyback off that, because I didn't get the answer, because I wrote it down in my notes, because I've been reading this all weekend, for the training, is Crown or Zeus and whoever's paying for the training, are you paying for the 50 to the 70? Because I want to know, let's say 70 people to be trained so that the people and the citizens can be adequately adapted to the jobs that you're giving? Thank you.
No, that's a great point. So the best way for me to answer that would be to mention like our Centerline plant, our Titan plant. Currently, there's about 35 mixers there. There's 10 to 15 managerial type positions, whether, there's some loader-operator mechanics and such. But there's also a lot of other jobs that are intrinsically created by us being there. And that would be the material trucks that bring in the sand and stone and cement. So, you know, there'd be job creation to create new supply sources to bring that into our location and other vendors, you know. So just by creating a new business, we will create more jobs. So I think the number was a range because nobody really, really knows until we get fully operational. But we will train, and that's what we do. There are some, again, I'll re-mention the, for the ready-mix truck drivers, the Teamster positions, there is a requirement to have a CDL A or B with air brakes so that you can legally drive the truck on the roads. And the yard positions and the management positions do not require those types of licenses, and we will train for those. And we prefer to train folks from the local community because it's nice to be close to work, on time, early home, things like that. So it, there's huge benefits for everybody to hire locally. And as Stefan is a great example of our programs in place, we like to not only hire, but promote, and promote, and promote, and promote, and expand, you know. And as the company grows and we grow together, there'd be more opportunities and new opportunities.
I just needed it put in writing.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
So much.
We're going to continue with the speakers list, and then we know that there's still more presentation that's waiting for us. For a first time, Councilman Goodman. For a second time, Councilwoman James and ProTim Carrington. And I'm going to have a point of personal privilege.
So two quick questions. While we're discussing jobs, based off of the very last question, of those, let's assume 50 jobs, how many of those are we expecting to be unionized Teamster jobs?
Light the mic, please. I'm going to stay right here. So the Teamster jobs that we employ would be around 35 to 40 in total.
And that's of the assumed 50?
Correct.
Thank you. Oh, actually, I do have one more question that I can follow up. So we've discussed, you know, what concerns that we necessarily shouldn't have when it comes to the environment and pollutants. To be very blunt, are there any that we do have to worry about at all? And also, like, in the case that something, I guess what would be also a common or potential mishap that the city would have to deal with, with this being a plant that is being constructed? Is there any, like, impact that if something goes wrong that we would have to deal with that we should be aware of at the very least?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman James.
Yes, first of all, the, what we're asking in terms of the zoning change, I'm comfortable with that, with the zoning change. I'm comfortable with the statement you made in terms of, you know, the difference in that becoming an M2 and keeping that away from the residential. I think that makes good sense. So from the zoning perspective, I don't see any problem with it. I would like to see, as our attorney Sharp mentioned, the planning, the documentation that was given to planning. Because what we have here is black and white copies that really, I can't see, I have no idea what this is. It's all blacked over, and so we need, we need better information, I do. So I would like to see, you know, before we have to make a decision on this, all of the planning, the information that actually went to planning. And we'll do our own investigations on it and be prepared to make a decision by next week.
And we welcome you to tour our Centerline facility.
Thank you, Councilwoman James. Any further questions?
That's it.
Any of Council, Councilman Nicholson?
So my family's in the concrete business, and, but what we do is the stuff that you have to be concerned about because we have a crusher and we truck aggregate. The, we pull up to places like yours, and our trucks have the same requirements of having to be completely washed, and we have a recycling unit that redoes that water. If, if we had, from what I'm looking at that we are provided with tonight, I think the only thing to me, just so everybody is aware, is just what came out of planning. It looks like all of the notes from the planner is here that addresses those, even those individual concerns, like the height of the silos and things like that. So the zoning, you know, amendment applications are here, the special exemption permit application is here with all of that information. So it's really what came out, right, what were the concerns? So Planning Commission is televised and recorded on our website, right? Do we know if that meeting is up and available yet?
Should be, to answer your question. And also, that Planning Commission, that body has transcripts, so you'd know every question and every answer verbatim. We can check with the Planning Department or the Community Development Department about when that transcript might be available.
Great.
But in the interim, you can also check the, roll the footage.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
You have the chair.
Was there, were you able to speak yet?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Others that wish to have the floor until we, all right, with that, hearing no other hands, the presentation can continue.
Okay, thank you. Can we go to the next slide, please? So, as I said, I'm the legal director, so I had a lot of involvement in drafting the agreement itself, reviewing the laws of the city and state of Michigan that involve this type of rezoning or conditional rezoning. The reason why this is a conditional rezoning is because the big condition is our company agreed to donate 65 acres of parkland, which was mentioned earlier before. I think what's really important to note is that the land that is to be donated is undeveloped land, so it's not a concrete yard that we're donating, it's land that's been undeveloped and is natural and has trees and grass and is ready for the taking. It will be completely 100% donated and fee simple to the city to do what they please. But as we know, if you add it to your parkland bank, we hope that that will help immensely. What also wasn't mentioned is a vision to actually connect the Clinton River Trail. It's just in the perfect location. Right now, the Clinton River Trail diverts up to Auburn Road and kind of goes around, and it misses Murphy Park. So this is an opportunity for the city, once it has the land, and for, I'm sure, many philanthropic organizations that would love to see the Clinton River Trail connected. organizations that would love to see the Clinton River Trail connected. So that was just another point I wanted to make. For the Councilwoman James, oh, next slide, please. I think maybe if we are able to send you these PowerPoint slides, we've got some really nice photos here for you to see, that this sort of depicts how it is now. Green is Murphy Park. The rest is completely owned by Crown Enterprises at this time. And north of that creek there is the lion's share of the parkland. Next slide, please. And this is what will be if the conditional rezoning agreement is approved. All of the area in the light green is what's being donated. The dark green is what you already have, and the blue will remain with Crown Enterprises. And we drew some dash lines there to show the Clinton River Trail. This is a better picture, actually, to show where Clinton River Trail could potentially be connected through. Next slide, please. Yep, I think that's, that's good. Next one, is there another one? I might have detail of project. We've been sitting here a long time. I think you guys have heard most of this. We have begun to begin the appraisal process, and, don't quote me on this, but it's landing right around 7 to 8 million. We put 5 to 10, just in case different things can change. We all know the market's changing rapidly every day. But a significant investment in the city and very high value of the land. Next, and just to summarize, the unique opportunity, I do want to add also that United Wholesale Mortgage and Crown Enterprises have met several times with state legislators to talk about receiving that funding for a connection to Optec Road. And we've gotten only positive responses. There is still a lot of federal American Rescue Plan dollars that are able to be spent on infrastructure such as roads. And so we're hopeful that we can get, secure some of those funds to connect the road, keep the extra trucks off of Bradford. And it is true that we've talked with United Wholesale Mortgage about working with them to vacate Bradford. And what would happen is we would enter into in our own sort of reciprocal easement agreement between the parties that would designate, you know, only cars for our employees can drive on the road and no trucks. And that's it. That's all I have.
I know that there's a representative. I know there's a representative from the Teamsters Union and want to, if you want to give them the floor, so that way they can amplify any feedback they had as well.
My name is Denny Krogstad. I'm president of Teamsters 614 in Pontiac. We're on Saginaw Street, right next to the Liberty Bar. And we're the home local of James Hoffa.
That's it.
So what I would like to say is that this is a unique opportunity. We have four cement companies in our union, but none in Pontiac. So this would be a significant change. And in regards to safety issues and that, we have two companies, mixing companies, that are literally surrounded by a residential area like in Wicksum and another one in Melford. And the one in Melford is almost right in the city of Melford, and they've never had any kind of problems with environmental issues at all. You're talking restaurants, you're talking about residential houses that are right next to the facility. So no, never, there's been no issues involved in environmental things that we've had. But the idea of a company coming in here and offering training and high-paying jobs is very significant, and that's what I'm excited about. So, you know, I just think it's a great opportunity.
Thank you for offering your perspective. So to confirm the local number of which you're the president.
614.
614, and that's based in Pontiac. And you said that's the home local of Jimmy Hoffa?
Jim Hoffa, yeah. Who just retired last year as international president.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
I think Councilwoman Rutherford might have a question directed to the local president.
Yeah, I just, first of all, thank you for all you do. My question is, I asked earlier the actual dollar amount per hour they were going to pay the Teamster jobs for the 35 to 40. Can you give me the actual dollar amount? Is it?
Yeah, well, as my understanding, you know, we haven't negotiated a contract yet, but we're looking at wages that will go up to $32 an hour. And that being said, I would have to say that maybe this is not fair to start negotiations, but they're actually higher rate than any other company that we have. So, and it's a progressive pay scale, so each year, those wages will go up. And in the standard, it's usually been a dollar an hour. So you're looking at a $32 an hour job could turn out to be 36 in four years, so.
I just wanted the numbers, thank you.
What's that?
I just wanted the numbers. I'm a numbers person, so thank you.
Yeah, and I think Mr. Kelly was correct, that there looks like there's 35 mixers, and there's probably five people that would supplement those positions.
And that's going to be?
That are union jobs, yes.
And that's going to be in writing the hourly rate, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any further questions specifically for the union president before we allow him to take his seat? Don't want to make him jump up again. All right, thank you very much for being here this evening, sir, to help expound upon this deliberation. We return to the speakers list. Other further discussion, the anticipation is that there'd be a motion to postpone for one week. It is your prerogative as the council, though, if you feel as though you're ready to make a decision. We've consumed a lot of information. You have a motion to postpone?
Correct.
And has it been seconded?
Support.
It's been motion to postpone, to clarify, for one week, correct?
Correct.
So postponement for one week, seconded by, was it Councilman Nicholson? So the motion is now before us for postponement of one week. Would you like to speak on the motion to postpone?
Well, I was hoping to give just one last comment about the substance of the proposal. I recognize, though, Mr. President, to your point, that perhaps I'm limited in speaking just to the postponement. But perhaps I could couch my comment as food for thought during the week of postponement.
Start tap dancing.
So I just want to leave folks with this thought. You know, we often talk about, when investment comes to Pontiac, the importance of getting community benefits as part of that investment. That yes, we appreciate and recognize the importance of investment itself. We appreciate and recognize the importance of job creation and of a higher tax base and more revenue to the city. But we often, as a community, look for some additional benefits that will benefit everybody in the community. And this really is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to double the size of Murphy Park and to remedy, for the first time in 20 years, this park's deficit that has prevented us from getting our fair share of federal and state dollars to properly maintain and improve our parks. So this is a really incredible opportunity.
Any further discussion on the motion to postpone for one week? Hearing nothing further, roll call on that motion to postpone. Clerk Doyle.
Rutherford?
Yes.
Carrington?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
78s, no names.
That motion carries. This matter will be before the City Council at our next regular meeting, which is seven days from now. Thank you very much for the thorough and robust deliberation and for the many individuals and staff members that helped field the questions and feedback from City Council. With that, we are now at public comment. Pro Tem Carrington.
Thank you, President McGinnis. Mr. Chuck Johnson.
Thank you very much, and good evening again, ladies and gentlemen. Chuck Johnson. I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and I had an opportunity to voice my concern at that time. And I've listened to a lot of the comments over the past week or two, and I drove out to the site to revisit and familiarize myself with how the layout of the land is. As a matter of fact, I drove up the proposed new road and almost fell into a ravine. But nonetheless, I want to emphasize to the council and to the folk here in the city, the citizens who may be second-guessing this project, it's a good project. And I think we should look at it from a standpoint where it's going to be a benefit not only to the city of Pontiac, but the county as well. These types of operations, I'm very, very familiar with them. And I know what the temporary setup would be like, and how fast they can put it up, how fast they can take it down. I'm familiar with the washout system. So anything that has been said and introduced to the council and the folks here in the chamber is a plus. And I guess especially the 65 acres that would be offered to the city. I mean, that's a big plus. I'm going to end my comment on this development, and I'm going to step into something else. As we move forward around the city, as I move forward around the city, I look at the blight conditions, and they're very paramount. And I also look at the parks and how they're being used for drug-related activities. My park, by my house, is detrimentally inhabited by drug addicts and users and the suppliers. So with that said, you know, I like to think that we can do something different, a little bit better, Mayor, as it relates to our parks and the blighted conditions that's happening in our community. So anyways, I got a minute left, but I just want to use that to say good luck to Crown and hope we can make this thing go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ariel, is it? Dockery? Ariel?
Duro.
Duro.
No, not here.
Mr. Robert Bass?
Thank you. I'm going to try to watch the clock this afternoon. At any rate, I'm not apologizing for what I said, and that's what you get when you go on the perception that Pontiac people are not intelligent. All we need is an explanation. I deal with five different organizations in our one district, and I'm a member of three of them. So when I talk to people, I try to give correct information, but I can't get that if I'm looping them around trying to find out or try to understand a process that's not in place properly for us to understand. Now, we have an obligation to come in here and speak out what we think or what we feel without being ridiculed. But we can't do that if we don't understand what the process is. For years, I've been dealing with a process where everything was put on the back burner until the presentation of the Planning Commission. They would do that first. Then I come into a situation where ZBA was doing the rezoning. And I went to the mayor, and I went to the deputy mayor and asked him what the process was, because it had changed since I had been doing it. They explained it to me, but this caught me off guard. And then I get phone calls. I don't get one or two phone calls. I get phone calls from all five different places and three districts. So when I got a phone call and saying this was on the bill on the agenda, of yes, I got upset. And yes, I was upset that I could not convey to them why we were coming back before council when it had gotten turned down, as far as my understanding was, it had gotten turned down in planning. So I didn't understand the process, the way it went. And I came here tonight to talk about two other things. Because when the councilperson and the mayor left my meeting, it was a lot of people very upset. They felt like they did not have an interest in the city of Pontiac. The mayor and council just do what they want to do. That's the process, that's the perception that they were left with. I came to talk about two other processes. We got charged for using a community center during business hours. I still don't know why that happened. Okay, we've been talking about for a few years about the money that y'all have allocated for districts. What is the process? We asked what that process was a few years ago. We come back, we got a new council, we ask the same process. What was explained to us Saturday was not acceptable. I don't have the time to go into it, but I thank you, and I hope that you come in and understand that we're not against any development coming in here, but that's our job, to seek what we want in our district. And I thank you for bringing your organization here. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I came here to talk about something else, but I received some somewhat good news that Ms. Wilson, the lady that got in the fight with the cops, will now, by the end of the week, will be into a mental facility and being treated for her problem. And the funny thing is, at the MDOT meeting yesterday, I asked the very same question as item number six today, and actually, it's something I have been talking about for years. There are a lot of intersections around this city that are totally unprotected. And South Boulevard at Woodward, who is the main street in Pontiac, has been unprotected for years, but because whoever was in charge of that intersection, MDOT or the Oakland County, thought it was a safe intersection, even though the people have been killed there before. Now it takes United Shore and the shutdown of MLK for something to be done. It shouldn't have never taken that long for that light to be there to control traffic. Also, while we're talking about South Boulevard, the light needs to go back up at Highland and South Boulevard. Between the traffic between United Shore and M1, it's hard for people to come off of Highland to get onto South Boulevard. They either turn down Nebraska and go around, or they go the other way. I asked a question last night at the MDOT meeting about South Boulevard light, and I got a BS answer from the guy at MDOT. I don't know who he was, but I shut him down because I didn't ask him that. I asked him, why could you do it? And they were trying to give me some answer about, well, next year, when we start working on South Boulevard, we're going to address that. No, this needs to be taken care of now. I see it's an item on there now, so eventually, it's going to be taken care of. But I also was told last night that it would take, it would take a whole lot longer than what the proposal is that's on for item number six. And someone told me from MDOT and somebody else that was in the audience, it takes a long time to get a new signal put on the street. I told them that's BS, and they told me, basically, I didn't know what I was talking about. So evidently, I know what I'm talking about, because now it's an action, it's going to be, it's an agenda item, and it's going to happen sooner than what they thought. So I'll be coming back for one other thing. There's a lot more streets in the city that need to be protected, but I'm just going to start with South Boulevard for now.
Thank you, sir.
Question for Tim. What administration stole the parkland that you in a deficit of parkland? Okay, this is for you, William Carrington. That Glenwood Plaza is a eyesore. There's nobody working there. I don't think there's any marijuana common. I don't see no one working. This is just some scrappers and some people just left garbage over there. It's just sitting there, nothing. I've drive by there, nobody's there. And so I believe that y'all got ganked, taken to the cleaners, they scammed, and they scram. Y'all got hoodwinked or something just ain't right. Y'all got, yay, and right out trick. Y'all thought that was great, marijuana, marijuana. Marijuana went down, it's just like the film industry. So what y'all going to do now? Now I got a eyesore, and they throw garbage back behind there. Me and my neighbors are tired, we're tired. So the garbage going to go, and y'all going to go if y'all don't get that taken care of. I come down here, and we mean business. I just don't talk to myself. You see one person, but there's 300 behind me. Now, this tax bill, I vote, people at Pontiac, please vote no on this tax bill, that's a 10-year tax bill. I called the Eglise Station Department. I have to pay $32 more on my tax bill if this pass. So for 10 years, that's $320. I don't have money to be given to the city of Pontiac, because they just want to raise my taxes. So every couple of years, you're going to raise my taxes. So I'm not, I'm voting no on that tax. You all have money, pay taxes. You have the school, they just passed one. And then the county got one for a bus. That's like in a few months. That doesn't even make sense. That doesn't even make sense. I said, vote no on tax bill, please. Now, this coming Thursday is the first day of fall. The leaves are turning green and the flowers are dying. What happened to the Pride of Beautification signs? Somebody say y'all gonna pull them out, really? That doesn't make sense. So you had the application, but everybody go around, but you didn't get the signs. I nominated several people, so I don't, I don't know, I'm gonna tell them where this sign is. Well, I guess this council got the code name. I'm gonna call y'all the Seven Up. That's everybody from one to seven, cause next election, seven people gonna be up. The opponents, get ready and save your money, this is an easy one. Y'all could take this. Mike Guinness go on there on Auburn Road to see how those con, that concrete place on the right edge. You go to Walmart, you, uh, Parkinson's, no go walk down, and watch how those trucks come in and out. Seven Up. This current council is now the bible. Time up, council.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Veronica Taylor?
First, I give honor to God, who's the head of my life, to the council, to the mayor of this city. Every Tuesday, a pastor come up in this here, counsel, and pray for this city. I'm asking you all, do not let these prayers go in vain. The reason I'm saying this, I said at home last Tuesday after I left out of here, and watched this council meeting on TV. I go into the Liberty Bar, I brought the governor, the lieutenant governor in there. Not because it's gay, not because he's racist, because he has good food in there. And a lot of people like going in there. We should not be attacking one another on raciness, or what these council people are not doing, or what not infect, or what's not being done according to where you want it done. We got to learn to stop fighting one another. And I'm saying this because ACIS is coming to heal this city and to heal this people that's in this city. On July 15th, I have a transgender son, and they wouldn't call me because I work in the community with political people. Yes, I got a lot of people in Pontiac that dislike me for what I do. I got a lot of people across the state that loves me too. But I'm telling you, we got to stop disliking one another. They actually tried to set my baby on fire in December, on July 15th, because he's a transgender. All this hatred that's going on and everybody wanna backbiting, I took my baby to the doctor today. I worked with the senators and the governors to change this world. And to have a doctor to tell me that my 26-year-old child may not live for what went on? Let me tell you something. We got to start loving each body in here and start backbiting one another, because the very ones you backbiting back is gonna come back and haunt you. You disliking me because what I'm doing for this country? You hating yourselves, not me, because God is watching. You say you want Pontiac changed. These people trying to bring jobs to this city. They trying to educate people on how to help one another, but y'all wanna tear one another down, still hadn't built this city up because Tim Grimal, this council members are up in here. I have to go home to a baby that may not, that's 26 that may die in my arms because he's a transgender. Do not keep hurting people that are transgender and gay, because God knew they coming before you even did. Amen.
Thank you. Pastor Kathy?
Well, I'd like to take a different tack tonight. I wanna thank some people. Couple of weeks ago, I got up and I had a list of several things that needed doing. Everything that I brought up that night has been handled. And I think we should say thank you when they actually get out and do what we asked them to do. I think it happens more often than they get thanked for. Um, I don't know if code got to it, the GPW, whoever took down that nasty sign, but it is down. And all the other things that I asked for that night, every single one of them was done within 10 days. Don't tell me this group isn't working.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Shirley, is it Dyer?
Dyer.
Dyer, okay, thank you.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I am on the board of the Pontiac Creative Arts Center. Um, a lot of you have probably grown up with the Arts Center. They're cultivating arts and culture in the community through outreach exhibitions and education. Um, we are coming up on our new, uh, season and we are taking board member applications. So if anybody knows anybody or would like to, um, you know, apply to be a board member for the Pontiac Creative Arts Center, I have a couple of applications here and I have some, um, business cards with me that you can come and grab. And we just wanna have as much community involvement as possible with that great gem of a building. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Ms. Darlene Clark?
I'm speaking as a residence first and foremost, living in Pontiac for over 67 years, born and raised here. Um, a lot of people have re, helped raise me. Thank you for that, Ms. Man, cause that's my girl right over there. First, I wanna say to you guys, I'm not talking to the council. Council doesn't listen. I live in District One, so let's straighten that out. I'm not talking to the administration, cause administration is not listening. Decisions you guys make has been made before we get here. So I'm talking to the people on what I have to say. I have heard people say that the Pont, citizens of Pontiac is non-appreciative. We're not non-appreciative. We care for our city, especially ones who was born and raised here and didn't leave. We care for our city. What we don't like is the people that were born and raised not to be taken seriously. We have been taken very lightly. And been taken lightly, we appointed people to the council, hear me, people, to represent us. You sit and say what the people are doing to you, but you don't say what you are doing to the people. Not answering calls is offensive to the people who lived here for all their days, like me. That's offensive when we call you, you don't answer or return a call. Or you call on a day of council meeting to make it look like you have done something. That's very offensive. It's offensive to see council members on our, here, to get up, walk back and forth, back and forth, and then you criticize the citizen because you wanna hear our conversations, but instead of you hearing what we have to say. You rather hear us whisper than to hear the speaker. No, sir, no, madam. You represent the church, you represent the gay community, you represent the youth, you represent whatever you represent, but you don't represent the people, is what I'm saying to you. And the people are hearing me and they agree. The most I can say to our people, look, I can come to this podium and say what needs to be said, but if you do not come out here and voice your opinion, it's only one person trying to fight your fight. You need to fight as a team. District One is atrocious. District Two is atrocious. District Three is atrocious. District Four is atrocious. District Seven, District Six, all of that, those seven districts are Pontiac, which we are ashamed, the citizen born and raised in Pontiac are ashamed to be in Pontiac. Now, you wanna bring businesses in, that's fine and good, but you're pushing out the residents who asking you for helping, you're not helping you. And I agree, you get $38,000 per district. Are you partying with the money? Are you putting it into your district? When the time is coming, you can knock the hedges off the street, you can help somebody, but you wanna entertain. The residents who's been here for a long time don't wanna party. We want progress. Progress for ourselves, because we, the people, pay taxes. We pay our taxes. When you raise them, we can't complain but pay them. When you, when you wanna raise them year after year, we can't do, we can't complain.
That concludes your time. Ms. Gloria Miller?
And I'll take off, as Mr. McGinnis would say, my, uh, family reunion. Let me tell you something, I'm not gonna be so as nice as darling, I'm gonna speak me, I'm gonna be me. Let me tell you something. People like me, Thelma Stevens, the name of few, Barbara Davenport, Harold Hesch, these are the people I came up under. We worked our butt off for this city. I got miles and miles. We helped put you there when there wasn't a council, when there was emergency manager and it wasn't none. And the disrespect that I get from all of you is horrendous. My mother always told me, don't forget where you came from. Y'all keep calling us old. I'm not old, I could outrun most of you out there. Not yet. I was taught to respect my elders, like the people that I just named. I respect them to the day. We may not always agree on everything, but we have respect for one another, because we all wanted the same thing, betterment for the city. Mr. Bass, go way back with Mr. Bass. I have great respect for Mr. Bass. We don't always agree on everything, but guess what? We got the same agenda to take care of this city. Parker, I wanna talk to you about my next door to my house, 45 Old Boyd Street. Several engineers was there out, I was doing my yard, and they getting ready to put a project out there, they said. So I don't know if they're gonna talk to you, Mayor, or you, I'm coming to find out. Uh, they wanna put apartments back there behind Coon, in that, in that vacant land that I've been talking about. And I, I walked out there and I, I mentioned to them who I was, and I let them know, nothing coming over there unless you, you talk to us over there in that street, because it's what the people want. They don't want anything in that land, because we don't want that street open for Amazon to go straight across and run that trap. And we don't want no properties in there. We got houses. You gonna put apartments in there with us and that like five acres, some houses? Seriously? So I told him, you're civil, I said I was gonna ask you, Mayor, have you spoke, cause see, they can't do these, he spoke to me a little bit. They can't do things, I used to be on the council unless someone gave them approval, cause they spending money right now. This is, so I'm telling you right now, Parker, Mayor, we are different. You're not gonna get to sit there and tell me what you gonna do. We'll show you what you're not gonna do when we went on in our neighborhood. It don't work like that with me. Also, uh, grandfather, would the people grant, be grandfather in for the ones, for the gurds, that's for the 72? I see you wanna go ahead and do it. What about the ones currently already in the gurds? Would that be for them, for the 72? You can't, someone asked me that, but I don't think you can do that. Uh, and Ms. Mike McGinnis, the family reunion thing, you ain't saying a reunion till you keep messing with me. You don't understand the respect I got in this community. I give you respect, you give me respect. We be sitting over there talking, we talking quietly. We're not bothering anybody, that camera's not on us. Do your job and forget us.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Kevin, is it Met?
Hi there, and thank you. Kevin Komet, uh, Vice President of Campus Development at UWM. Uh, tonight, we heard some, uh, great presentations from Crown Enterprises and, uh, you know, they referenced UWM in their proposal and stuff, so I thought it'd be good for us to just give us a few words, uh, so you get it right from our perspective. Uh, we support development in Pontiac. Uh, we're developing ourselves, uh, we have 200 acres, uh, over 2 million square feet of space. Uh, we give back to the community through our sports complex. So we have a very vested interest in being a, a, a good neighbor for, for the city, city and residents. Uh, we bring a lot of tax dollars in. We're also looking at partnering and opening up dialogue, how we can partner better with the city on Murphy Park and improving it, adopting, doing an adoption program or coming up with some programs where we can do that, with the Crown Enterprise Development coming in and adding that parkland to it. It's a tremendous opportunity, cause our building now will border south of Mur, Murphy Park. So we wanna continue to move down that, that path. Also with the Bradford Street, uh, yeah, we wanna vacate it, but we also wanna add access to the Clinton Trail or to Murphy Park at the end of Bradford Street, not only just for our team members, but for the city residents. Yes, it'll be a private road with new streetlights. We're gonna repave it. We want, we have all the positives going down there. We wanna continue those positives. So that's where our support for the development in that sector and around the city is again another catalyst of more, uh, revenue coming in and better, uh, environment for the residents to have, and actually more resources, to be quite frank. So that was all we had. Uh, Barry, did you have anything, or?
No, we had.
Okay. So anyway, that was it. Thank you very much. Um, we appreciate our, the time. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. We move now to discussions. The first discussion is increased traffic pressure at South Boulevard and Woodward Avenue, and the potential short-term and long-term solutions being sought, uh, from the state of Michigan, uh, by our community. Uh, so it's been referenced multiple times already this evening, and I wanted to make sure we as a community and a council spoke about it further, because it's something that I believe every council member is hearing from their constituents. Uh, it's technically the intersection borders District Seven and One, uh, but there are many residents or employees that traverse this high priority intersection and are impacted and are impacted, um, sorry, I just wanted to let for the, um, discussion to stop in the, uh, audience. So we're talking about Woodward Avenue and South Boulevard. At the beginning of this year, the City Council adopted a resolution, and that resolution called for safety improvements at South Boulevard and Woodward. And from there, um, we have had a, a big development in recent weeks where the, the, uh, bridge has been closed on Martin Luther King Boulevard South. And with that, uh, it has led to increased volumes of vehicles at that intersection and enhanced safety concerns, more so than we already had with the existing configuration. So the state of Michigan had already committed to making a Michigan left at that intersection. So that way, that very wide intersection wouldn't have as many accidents and unfortunately fatalities. So in the meantime, because that's gonna be a few years out, um, we're now concerned with that bridge closure, that if there is a, a turn, uh, signal that can be added temporarily, that it can improve the congestion, it can improve the safety. And, uh, so I wanted to let the community know that the State of Michigan Department of Transportation has stated that we should have an answer before the end of this month about what we'd be looking at, what's the viability of that, uh, for a, a turn signal and for addressing the, the congestion issues in that, those two important thoroughfares in our community. So I wanna give the council the opportunity to discuss further, and Mayor, if you and your administration have anything further you'd like the community and this council to know about this priority issue.
Yeah, thank you, President McGinnis. Um, I, I wanna amplify the point you made, which is that very early this year, council passed a resolution talking about the need for safety improvements at that intersection of Woodward and South Boulevard. And originally, uh, there was a, a plan already in place for 2024, so two years out was the, was the plan as we entered office in January, to do some improvements at that intersection, really to reconfigure that intersection, to prevent left turns, to require people to make Michigan lefts at that intersection, because we've had way too many fatalities at that intersection. We had a conversation with, uh, M.DOT and with our then-city engineer, and we moved that project up a year from 2024 to 2023, so that those safety improvements would happen a year earlier, a year sooner than was previously projected. Uh, we now have a situation where we already have those safety challenges there, but in addition to that, we now have enormous congestion there that's resulted because of the Martin Luther King Bridge going out. And obviously, that's something that when we entered office, uh, in January, we did not foresee happening. But as we've discussed in, in recent weeks, uh, we discovered that that Martin Luther King Bridge is in horrible shape, so such horrible shape that it had to be entirely closed, not just the vehicle traffic, but even to pedestrian traffic. Uh, and we are working expeditiously to try to address that. Uh, as I've mentioned before, um, there is a pot of money through the state called the Emergency Bridge Fund, uh, that will learn, uh, we should learn on a preliminary basis next month in October, and then get final, uh, determination in November about whether we qualify- we qualify for those funds. That should fund about 95% of the cost of the bridge. That still leaves, even if we get that funding, and we're optimistic we will, that would still leave a huge amount of funding for the city to cover because the cost of rebuilding that bridge is almost $10 million. And so 95% of that would be, you know, $9.5 million. That would still leave $500,000 for the city to cover, and that's just in construction costs. In addition to that, the city is likely to be responsible for the entirety of the engineering and design work. And we've already started as a result, since it's unlikely that cost will be reimbursed by the state anyway, we've already started on that design and engineering work initially to try to bring down the bridge that's still there because it is a potential safety risk even to trains traveling under that bridge. So our first effort, and we've been in touch, of course, with the railway to make them aware of it, and our first effort is to quickly demolish the bridge that's there, which would have to happen anyway in order to rebuild it. So we are working expeditiously. But we know that at the very soonest, that MLK Bridge won't be rebuilt until next year sometime, 2023. It could be even as long as 2024, but we're hopeful that it'll be sometime next year in 2023, which means that this new problem of congestion compounding the existing safety problems at South Boulevard and Woodward is a serious, serious problem. And so we've started, as President McGinnis indicated, of having conversations with MDOT, recognizing that the longer term plan next year is to reconfigure that intersection to not allow left turns, but to require Michigan lefts. In the meantime, until that reconstruction occurs at that intersection, can we have a green arrow mechanism there to both improve safety and to reduce that congestion? Again, that congestion really is temporary, and I realize that we're talking about a long-term temporary situation until that MLK Bridge situation is solved. But during that time, can we allow for a left turn arrow on westbound South Boulevard so that we can get traffic moving through that intersection more quickly? Ultimately, we need MDOT sign off for that, but stay tuned because we realize that we have a real serious problem at that intersection, not just in terms of safety, although we take that obviously most seriously, but also in terms of congestion. So appreciate the opportunity to speak a little bit to that, President McGinnis, and obviously welcome your efforts and council efforts along with ours to try to get MDOT to make some improvements there.
Deputy Mayor Stevens.
Thank you, Council President. Just to follow up with what the mayor said, I was on the phone with Director Cooley, and MDOT has been working with us. They have been collecting information, asking about the traffic volumes, the time of day that these things are happening so that they can do the necessary reprogramming to make the, they call it phasing, to do the phasing so that they can actually allow for the left turns at the times of day with the right length of time to actually solve the problem. So we hope to have something back from MDOT in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you for that. And I want to thank my council colleagues that have provided the administration with some of that feedback from constituents about the particularly heavy congestion or issues with safety concerns. Any further discussion on this discussion item? Councilman Goodman, you have the floor.
So personally, I'll say that I feel that this intersection in particular has been a problem for an extended period of time because of how it's configured in terms of people trying to make turns on Woodward and off of it. So I think that having the long-term, short-term solution of having a actual light there will be massively beneficial. But I also think this is a moment to flag for the administration some other intersections in the city that are less than ideal currently. And like the one that immediately comes to my mind is MLK and I want to say Perry, so by Universal, the, you know, that process. And I think there are a couple of different intersections in the city that I don't off the top of my head that we should look at and evaluate in terms of safety, especially for those turning off of major roads, especially in blind spots like that one or somewhere where there's just a massively increased flow of traffic, especially right now.
Any further discussion? Councilman Nicholson.
I'll piggyback that there have been conversations and there will be community conversations for the benefit of anyone passing through District 2. The intersection of Huron and Johnson Street, there is an MDOT project that is slated for the future that will result in a road diet that will actually slim some portions of that, of that intersection and will actually right the lane transition. As I'm sure everyone's familiar, as you're heading westbound, there is an really odd jog that you have to make, and not anybody, everybody who's passing through town understands it. But that will be addressed in this, this next project by MDOT, and they will be seeking our feedback and invited to many opportunities around the city to get community feedback about that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion? With that, we move to the next discussion item. DTE Energy is doing work and system upgrades where Cesar Chavez meets Woodward Loop. And so there's occasional southbound closures of Cesar Chavez Avenue and detours at the Woodward Loop, and it, the balance of that should be throughout this week. So for the community's benefit, here's the aerial view. You might have already experienced that. It's a route that I'm on frequently, going from the History Center back down towards my house. And so it's not consistently closed, but on and off, they are closing that. I want to make sure the community knew that and wasn't taken off guard by some of the lane closures. Councilman Goodman?
So because I also make this same exact trip up this road, do we have like a, like a scheduled time of when this is supposed to be happening throughout the rest of the week, or is it just whenever it happens? Because I think it would be beneficial to know approximately when this would be.
What it was posted was at the beginning of last week, it said for about two weeks. And so based on what I've observed for the last week plus is that it has been sporadic. And I don't know if the administration knows anything beyond that in terms of only on X day for X period of time, but it seems to be that they're trying to be conscientious of congestion and rush hour for their own crew's safety, too. But I, but what was posted by the city was just for a period of two weeks, and we're about halfway through it.
So I would just say that moving forward, it would be nice to get more concrete details as people have to use what is major roads, including Woodward, to get around the city. So making sure that we have as much information ahead of time when these closures are happening. That way, we're not having to make sporadic detours when people are not necessarily planning on it if they're from here or if they're coming through or first time being here, being thrown off. So that's why I flagged that.
Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, the final discussion item, wanted to let the community know about an opportunity for discounted adoption fees. Oakland County Animal Shelter and their Pet Adoption Center, which is located at the Oakland County Complex at 1200 North Telegraph. So they have a high volume of animals there currently. So they have discounted their adoption fees. For dogs, it's now at $40, and for cats, it's now at $20. There are other opportunities in Pontiac and the vicinity, but since this has a unique change in their adoption fees and their shelters at or near full capacity, want to make sure the community knew that about this opportunity for dog and cat adoption. Any further discussion? All right. With that, we are now at Council Communications. This month, September 20, 2022, has been recognized as Suicide Prevention Month by a vote of the City Council. It has similarly been recognized as Sickle Cell Awareness Month. On September 22, there is a workshop for felting at the Creative Arts Center, September 22, 6:00 PM, and that's at 47 Williams Street in Pontiac. The Oakland County Prosecutor's Office Racial Justice Advisory Council has their Second Annual Justice Resource Fair, September 24, from 12 to 2:00 PM, and that's held at Bodett Park, 786 Orchard Lake Road in Pontiac. Hispanic Heritage Month runs from September 15, 2022 to October 15. That's part of the reason why with this council vote, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month, those Latin American territories of the United States and countries, their flags are displayed here in these chambers and in our city hall. So that is running as well. Gallery 46 has an exhibit celebrating Hispanic heritage. Their opening show is September 24, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and that's located at 46 North Saginaw in downtown Pontiac. Flu Shot Clinic is September 27, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, held at the Bowen Center, 52 Bagley Street in Pontiac. Oakland County, they had their first round of their land auction. Their second round is scheduled for September 28. That's being done online. So visit tax-sale.info. That's the website, tax-sale.info, online for more information. And that's where you can bid in the auction as well. The Clinton River Trail Resurfacing Project Ribbon Cutting is September 30 at, I believe it's 1:00 PM, 1:30 PM. Okay, I'm glad that the agenda's got it right. I was doubting myself. All right. So that's being held on the trail just west of Bagley Street, where the bridge crosses over the Clinton River in Pontiac. Sebas Pharmacy and St. Paul Pontiac Community Lutheran Church have their annual flu vaccine clinic, October 5, from 1:00 to 6:00 PM, held at St. Paul's at 1133 Jocelyn Avenue in Pontiac. You heard earlier about the ACES Training Opportunity, October 7. That information is reiterated on our agenda. There is a deep meditation and art therapy, October 7, held at the Pontiac Creative Arts Center, 6 to 8:00 PM at 47 Williams Street. For the sake of time, I'll leave it there, but we have additional items listed on our agenda so that way you can follow along for other upcoming events. As always, if you have any submissions, please reach out to the City Council, and we will include them to the best of our ability and make sure that the community knows about all the moving parts with our organizations, businesses, and citizens. So with that, we're now at Mayor's Office Communications. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, a few things that I've mentioned in the past, but that bear repeating. This is Senior Center Month. So if you're looking for a reason or an excuse to go to the Bowen Center or the Ruth Peterson Center, there are even more fun activities at our senior centers this month than there are normally. So please check them out and participate in the full offerings at our two senior centers. In addition, I'm not going to go through the long list of offerings that are on tap this fall, but I do, because I already went through them last week, but I do want to remind people that enrollment is open for our Fall Youth Recreation and Youth Enrichment Programming. And we have sports offerings, but we have lots of non-sports offerings as well. So I think regardless of the young person who you know, whether they're your family member or they're a friend's family member, or they're your neighbor's kid, regardless of the young person, we are going to have something on offer that is of interest to them. And we encourage you and their family to sign them up for these youth recreation enrichment opportunities. You can do so by going to pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. That's pontiacrecreation.reckdesk.com. Also, we had a great town hall yesterday at the Prospect Missionary Baptist Church on the east side about the proposed MDOT reconfiguration of the Woodward Loop around downtown. But we have another opportunity tomorrow, which will be the last opportunity in terms of the series of town halls that we've been having on the topic. And that will be tomorrow, September 21, Wednesday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Bowen Center. So please come out, learn more about the project, let your voice be heard. We will be bringing something before council about this in the coming month, in all likelihood. So this is going, you can obviously speak at a future council meeting when this is on the agenda, but this is going to be the last opportunity as part of a town hall series. So we look forward, hopefully, to seeing you tomorrow, Wednesday, September 21, at 6 o'clock at the Bowen Center. In addition, we're double booked for town halls tomorrow. If you're not so interested in the MDOT Woodward Loop issue and more interested in the skate park and the plans surrounding the skate park, we welcome you to come out tomorrow night, again, Wednesday, September 21, at 6:00 PM, to learn more about the proposed skate park project right here in the Pontiac City Hall City Council Chambers. And I know we've had past town halls on the skate park as well, and we've had several past town halls on the MDOT Loop project. But we believe that we want to give Pontiac residents every opportunity to be heard. And so it's been said before, but if anything, we're going to err on the side of too many town halls because we want to hear from our residents. In addition, this Thursday at 6:00 PM, we have the last in the series of our lawn chair concert series events. That's this Thursday, September 22. It is featuring, drumroll please, our very own City Councilwoman, Melanie Rutherford, who has a voice that is legendary, not just east of the Mississippi, but west of the Mississippi and everywhere in between as well. And she is being joined by Fat Greasy. And so this is going to be an exciting, exciting concert, 6:00 PM this Thursday, September 22, at the one and only Rotary Park. I believe the actual performance won't start until 6:30. So if you're running a little bit late, we do have an opening act. Okay, I'm going to defer to you. And two final items for me to mention. Number one, my State of the City address this coming September 29, towards the end of the month. That is Thursday, September 29, 6:00 PM at the Crowfoot. Please come out and hear about all of the things that have happened since January, all of the progress that we have made in the city, and all of the progress yet to come. We look forward to seeing people there. We will have food on offer as well as some other entertainment, and we look forward to seeing folks come out again, September 29, 6:00 PM, at the Crowfoot for the State of the City address. And then if you have additional questions, concerns, comments, come on out to the last, in this series anyway, of the brunch and community conversations with the mayor series. That is going to be on Saturday, October 8, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Bowen Center. So hope to see you there as well.
With that, Mayor Grimal, it's time for your closing comments. You have the floor.
Well, thank you, thank you, President McGinnis. I just wanted to address a couple of the questions that we heard this evening. We did get a question about when some of the park conversions occurred. In other words, these parks improvements that were funded with state and federal dollars where the parkland was sold or otherwise converted for non-park purposes. There are really four events that are in question, and some of these I have a pretty good sense of the timeframe on, but there are a couple here that I don't have a good sense of the timeframe on. Probably the single biggest issue here, because keep in mind that we're talking about 28.1 acres of city parkland was converted. The bulk of that was the conversion of 17.68 acres. So almost 18 of that 28 acres was converted back around the year 2000 or so, 2000, 2001, 2002. And that's when a substantial portion of Hawthorne Park, again, almost 18 acres of Hawthorne Park, was used to extend the Telegraph roadway north from the intersection, intersection of Cesar Chavez slash Dixie Highway and Telegraph north to Walton. As many of you will recall, there did not used to be a Telegraph Road there. And that portion of Telegraph Road was built right around 2000, early 2000s. So I don't know if that was done under Mayor Walter Moore or whether it was done under Mayor Willie Payne, but it would have been one of those two administrations where that almost 18 acres of Hawthorne Park was used to build that roadway. That is the majority of that acreage. But in addition, there were two decisions made during emergency management. I believe during, again, the mayor's sort of irrelevant in this case because we all know unfortunately that the emergency managers were calling the shots. So I, and I'm not sure exactly which mayoral administration it was. But those are the sale of the Hayes Jones Recreation Center. I think we're all familiar with, with that horrible decision to sell that. And then in addition, the sale or conveyance, I don't know And then, in addition, the sale or conveyance, I don't even think it was sold, I think it was given to the Water Resources Commission of that .7 acre, so less than an acre of land for that pumping station there at the entrance to Galloway Park. Now, that was less than an acre of land, that obviously is a relatively small portion of this, but that also occurred under emergency management. The two other conversions, and by the way, the Hayes Jones parcel was almost eight acres, it was 7.8 acres. So that, together with the Hawthorne Park conversion for that Telegraph Road, account for 25 acres, a little more than 25 acres of that 28 acres. In addition, there's that less than an acre there in Galloway Park. The other two conversions, and these are the ones where I'm not sure when they occurred, was, again, a conveyance, I don't know if it was sold, I don't know if it was given away, I don't know the full history here of what was the Osman Street Play Lot. That was just over a tenth of an acre, that was .11 acres, about a tenth of an acre. And then the Southwest Civic Park, which was 1.6 acres. So that is the sum total of the park conversions that occurred, at least to my knowledge, and they should total to 28.1 acres, if that math is correct. In addition, there was a question asked about this change in federal law that lengthens the permissible time for pension distributions to be made. So I want to just be clear about what this allows. What the law said before was that pension distributions had to be made no later than either when somebody retires, if that's the later date, or that somebody turns 70.5 years of age. In other words, they hit their 70 and a half birthday, if you will. That first provision has been lengthened to 72. It doesn't mean that people can't get their pension before then. In fact, in general, people will already get their pension before then, as long as they want to get their pension before then, and the pension system rules, given the collective bargaining agreement and other provisions that determine when they get their pension, come into play. This is just what the federal law says. And so it shouldn't affect anybody in Pontiac unless they were trying to hold off until they were older than 72 to get their pension. And I think that's very, very unusual, and everybody at least is entitled to get their pension if they want to, earlier than the age of 72. Again, if they're still working, they wouldn't have to get it until they retire, even if that's later than their 72nd birthday. So this really shouldn't be a problem for anybody in the context of Pontiac at least. And, Mr. President, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Clerk Doyle, your closing comments.
Mr. President.
All right. Councilman Rutherford, District One, your closing comments.
Thank you. You should be angry. You must not be bitter. Bitterness is like cancer, eats upon the host. It doesn't do anything to the object of its displeasure. So use that anger to make change. That was a quote said by Maya Angelou. I'd like to clarify several points that was made tonight, and I'd like to bring proof. In April, I gave out a community project worksheet. This is what it looks like. I pass it out at every meeting. I've said you can come pick it up from me. The community project worksheet tells you exactly how to get funds for community service projects. No one has turned in a community service worksheet that's factual, and I have the emails if people say they did. They didn't. That's the one thing. But I have 30 copies so that they can be given out today because I want people to see that it's factual. Number two, it's okay. No decision has been made to use the funds, except for the Bowen Central Idol Wild Trip, which was checked upon and made sure that I did it within the guidelines of the money for District One, and that was per the president, because he wanted to ensure that it was done in decency and in order. Number three, no phone conversations, no emails have been given to me from the constituent, which stated earlier since January 2021. I went to the back and checked my emails just to make sure, and just to add clarity, because I like for people to understand truth instead of fiction. The Ring Central is located on the phone, so we get the calls from the city as well as the emails, so they're checked daily. Number four, I attend all community CDC meetings. I also go to Ms. Stevens Bloomfield Estate and Quincy Stewart Crestwood Estates, and I can show my actual attendance if asked to. Number five, no money has been spent on any parties that I've ever had in District One from District One. It has always came from me. No backpacks, me. No t-shirts, me. I spend my own money, and if I don't spend my money, because I have to show where I get the money from, I can show you every business who has wrote checks to support what I am doing in District One. You can make up a rumor, you could say whatever you want, but the money don't lie, and receipts don't either. So again, here's the application. If you want to do a District One project, you can physically come fill this out and get it done. What we're not going to do is try to cause confusion. You may not like my personality or style, but we're going to tell the truth. Okay, got that done. Number three, I got that part. I have a wonderful District One meeting this Saturday. You can come pick up an application there if you can't get one tonight. It starts from 11:00 to 1:00. It's going to be at the lovely Alley Cat, where I have great food, great conversation. I'm going to have DTE, I'm going to have WRC, because there are some people who have real problems in my district who can't pay their light bill, gas bill, and water bill, and I want to make sure they have the resources on site. That's factual. If you can't reach me from the 248-758-3017 number, you can reach me at 248-3900-591. You can also reach me at MelanieRutherford1 at Instagram. You can meet me at MellowWay at Twitter. You can reach me at MelanieRutherford on Facebook. There's absolutely no reason why anyone can't reach me. The choice is, are you really reaching me, or you just want to complain? And, and, you cannot tell me that work is not being done in District One, because what I also do to cover myself so people can't lie is every email, every request, I forward to the following people. I have said it over and over again. Tim Grimal, Al Cooley, Mike McGinnis, William Carrington, if it's really, really serious, and myself, and to the original person that sent it from me, because what you will not do is make up stories because you have a displeasure with what I am doing. Now, last and certainly not least, we have to, I want to thank Amaya Taylor for repairing the deck in District One, because that's important to me at the Bowen Center, because I love the Bowen Center and they love me. And we have the Clinton River Trail. It's okay, you can laugh if you want, hate it or love it, the underdog's on top. And we have a Clinton River Ribbon Cutting that's coming in October, which I will be attending, and last, really last, tonight, on Thursday, we have a young lady named Lauren Nicole, who is an amazing young lady from the city of Pontiac, who is my opening act. And the reason why I'm doing that is because 25 years ago, when I was 16 years old, when Fox let me be her opening act, when I performed at Flood's, and five years later, I got my first publishing deal and my first record contract. And that is how you teach what real leadership is, you give people an opportunity. You don't knock them because you don't like them. You don't talk about them because you don't like the way they walk. You do the work and you give them an opportunity. So that's what I'm choosing to do. And then the words of Mariah, hate it or love it, the underdog's on top. And that, I say, good night.
District Two, Councilman Brett Nicholson, your closing comments.
Want to give a special thank you to a few people. One to Jim Nash, our Water Resource Commissioner. You know, it's awesome that, I have this project that I'm trying to get done where we have some community gardens, and these gardens exist in the middle of a boulevard. So when you call WRC, of course, their question, first question's going to be, what is the address? There is no address, it's in the middle of a street, and explaining that to somebody can be quite difficult. But the minute that I got Jim Nash himself on the phone, he knew exactly what I was talking about, had no problem getting on Google Maps, drilling right down to where I was speaking about, and doing some, what I think is probably fun historical research to find out, how were there, how was irrigation happening in these gardens? Because it has become more and more difficult for the volunteers that keep up these beautiful historic district gardens to get water. They've been trucking it from neighbors' houses, and getting that water turned back on is really important to continue to highlight those entrances to the historic district. So thank you to Water Resource Commissioner Jim Nash. He did get the information, got a crew right out there, evaluated what needed to be done, and then gave us the exact, step-by-step instructions on how to get a plumber out there to do it. So we do have a few plumbers that we're trying to get on their schedule. It is not a typical project, so not every plumber's willing to dive into it, and not every plumber has a lot of time right now. Want to give a special shout out to a couple of contractors that are doing some really awesome work in our neighborhoods in District Two. By no means are these endorsements by the council or the city itself. I just wanted to point out just some really great work and some residents that have been really satisfied. MG Brick Reconstruction Restoration, that is over on Kennet. Their property, what they've done with this property that used to be a derelict bar, right in front of an old plant, but now this is a beautiful, you know, space that they're doing amazing work out of. And they've been doing a lot of tuck pointing and historical renovations, and they've done a really amazing job. So don't call them before I do, because I have some work to myself, but it is, they're doing a really fantastic job. And then A&amp;M Plumbing, who has done, you know, a tremendous amount of work in the neighborhoods and has gotten to know a lot of our historic infrastructure, and they're doing just, they're on call, they're always out within a moment's notice. I've never had one of our neighbors go wrong. In the last couple of weeks, they've been very, very active in District Two. Want to give an update, again, on Rush Our Court, as this is what I believe is probably the most dangerous structure in the city, or one of the most dangerous structures in the city. The city is in active litigation, trying to get the bond dollars from the bonding company. So, you know, we can start with, we, you know, issue the tickets, and we condemn the property, and we do the things that we're supposed to do, but when somebody still doesn't listen, and it gets down to the wire, the only recourse we have is to take them to court. And, you know, that is, that's where we're at. So it does take some time, as everybody knows, even our district court is backed up to the absolute gills. I mean, I'm hearing of people waiting for court cases that go five months later, you know, from the, that's just a traffic ticket. You know, so this is real. This is, it's happening, it's moving, there are attorneys working on it, and it's going through the court system as it is right now. As it relates to that, in the next few weeks, with a lot of these, you know, I get a lot of comments from residents that we have property owners that have $14,000 worth of fines. You know, so sometimes you get those bills and they don't think they're real, because in the past, in the city, they haven't been real. Be really honest, those bills have been issued, those tickets have been issued, but there was no skin in the game. There never, you could ignore that all day long, and there would be no ramification. In the next few weeks, from our finance committee, my finance committee, you will hear the council taking up the opportunity to put those fines on the winter tax bills. So those are becoming very, very real, and those dollars, those numbers, those tickets are very high. So we're hoping that that will, again, give them the incentive, make sure that they know that they're real, and we can move forward. If that doesn't do it, of course, like I said, the only other option we have, and it has to be targeted, because we can't, we can't take everybody to court, but I'm sure the administration will make those tactical decisions. But that's what I have for tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Mikhail Goodman, District Three, your closing comments.
So the first thing I have to say is, the fact that some of us walk into this room and pretend that Pontiac went from Tulsa to today like that is ridiculous. The fact that we pretend as if everything in the city fell apart in the span of one election and can be fixed in the span of one election is ridiculous. It is stupid. It is not well thought out, and anyone who has done this job understands that. And I'm saying that as a whole because we all recognize that this is an overall thing that we have to do together. The other part of it is that, of all of my colleagues, I would truly like to say that I'm probably the slowest to anger up here. But the fact that we have to come back every single week and hear some of you pretend as if you know, especially me, bothers me a lot. Because as a person who has grown up in this city, born and raised here, since we like to throw that around a lot, someone who has grown up in Section 8 housing, on food stamps, being food insecure in this city, not being able to get back and forth between school, having to find my own way there, having to go and work and try to find my way to run for this seat, to fight for people, because none of you gave me really any real support because I don't come from the family and the connections. I don't come from a family with a great last name. I had to do every bit of this myself because I wanted to make a change. So for any of you to pretend as if you know me and the work that I do up here bothers me a lot, because everything that I do up here is not for me. I could care less about what happens for me, but I have 60,000 people in the city who I have to worry about. I have 8,000 plus in my district who I have to fight for because they weren't being fought for before. So when I come up here and do the work, I truly could care less about what happens to me, because I still have a full-time job that I have to work. My life does not depend on this building, but the people of this community who are not in this building, who are not elected up here, don't have people to fight for them unless I do it for them. So the fact that we have this conversation every single week, I would just love if everyone in here picked up their part of it, because again, we talk about what has been done, what we're doing. Continue to do that, because I am fighting just as hard as the rest of you, because again, I also do my best to do this job, working a full-time job, contracting for someone else, and then still trying to find the day to make sure that I am on everyone's tail, to make sure that they're doing their job, including the mayor's office. And the fact that we have to have this discussion every single week, and not just wasting, I really don't care about wasting time. I can do this because it's what I am here to do, it's what I've been elected to do, because at the end of the day, I am here to do the work for the people who elected me. But also, let us do that work, be a part of that work, because again, if we want to get to where we want to go, if we want to actually have a city that we care about, something that we can truly say that we have done on our own and fought for to do, then let us try to do it together, whether or not you agree with me, because I don't have to agree with you to get work done, but I want to see things happen. And honestly, I do not think that will happen until we get it through our heads, that this is a group effort, whether you like us or not. So with that, I say good night.
Councilman Kathleen James, District Four, your closing comments.
Yes. First of all, our District Four Community Council Meeting will take place on September 28th. That is next Wednesday. We had planned to try to do a in-person meeting, but we're actually going to have to go ahead with our Zoom meeting. So again, our meeting for the month of September will be a Zoom meeting. It will take place on September 28th, that's Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, and the Zoom link is always on our Facebook page, and I also send it out to the residents who send me their email address. You can send that email address if you're looking tonight and would like to participate to kjames@pontiac.mi.us. Also, our September Parks Recreation and Public Works Subcommittee Meeting will take place this coming Monday, September 26th, at 12:00 noon in the Legislative Conference Room. Those are my two announcements. I did want to comment, though, a little bit on the comments that the mayor made in regards to, you know, he gave a very good discussion about all the parks and the, that this whole problem had, has come up about. And I am concerned that we need to have language in our charter that prohibits the sale of parkland in this city. I think that is what we have to do to protect ourselves from this kind of nightmare ever happening again. So I plan to attend the next meeting of the commission, the Charter Revision Commission, to ask them to work on language in our charter that would prohibit the use or the sale of parkland. And just in closing, I would say, you know, looking at the comments that have been made, I am proud of the work that we have done. I am very happy about, you know, just the vision I see of so many things coming together, which doesn't mean that they didn't come together before we got here. There's been a progression of good things happening and bad things happening, but I'm very encouraged by what I see going on. So I guess, you know, there's a saying that the glass is always, can either be half empty or half full. And I can't explain... And I can't explain why someone else sees it half empty, but I do want to say that I see it half full. Thank you.
Closing comments for District Five, Councilman William Parker, Jr.
Thank you, Brother President. First, I want to announce that our CDC meeting for October, we do October 14th at 6:00 PM, inviting each and every one of you in District Five to come and share with us as to how we can improve our district. Want everybody to know that if you're looking to connect on Zoom, you can find the link on Parker for Pontiac on Facebook. You can find it on the city website. I believe Mr. Martin put it on the city website. Or you can call me and give me your email address, and I'll fax it to you personally. I would like to have more than five people come and discuss what goes on at this District Five CDC meeting. I want to thank, matter of fact, we have some folks there from District One who comes and share with us, and I can't get the people from District Five to come and share with us to any large degree. We can't move the city forward if you don't help us move the city forward. But I understand this. There's a biblical saying, it's do unto others as you would have them do unto you. When I was born, my mother called me William Parker, Jr. When I went into service, they called me the Airman Parker or Sergeant Parker. When I came into corporate America, they called me Mr. Parker. When I ran for city council, I became Councilman Parker. When I became a pastor, I became Pastor Parker. I would like that if you're going to address me when I sit at this desk, that I be addressed by Councilman Parker. Do unto others as you would expect them and have them do unto you. I have earned it, and I certainly deserve it. And with that, I say, have a good evening.
President Pro Tem, William A. Carrington, District Six, your closing comments, sir.
Thank you, President McGinnis. It's a beautiful day, as always. Well, I want to be very quick, very quick tonight concerning Glenwood. Glenwood is a situation that was inherited from the last administration or the administration before. It's always been a problem in our eyes or in our community. So it's always, it's been on my list since day one I took office, and actually, when I was community activist, trying to make sure we get rid of blight, it's been on my list as well. So it, I don't, unless I'm, I'm not God, I don't have a magic wand, I'm not a musician. We have processes and procedures. I've done my due diligence and reported these issues. So I don't know what else, I don't know what else, I don't know what else to do, honestly. So I do believe-
Well, you personally cleaned it.
Well, actually, I've done that too. But so I'm about to get to that because I believe in collective work and responsibility means that we do for self. We create for ourselves, we name for ourselves, and as a community, we help the process. So if anybody went to my district that wants to help me clean up Glenwood Plaza, I'm all for it, but I will not be out there by myself with a broom and a dustpan. So I'm just going to say that for the record. I'm not going to say, I'm going to say that for the record, but if someone wants to help me, because I get plenty of calls all week, not about Glenwood, but all the other things, thanking me for the things that we actually doing in the city. But if we want to get Glenwood cleaned up, I'm willing to set a cleanup date. I'm willing to finance this, and we can go do it. We can do, well, that Councilman is correct. That's, that is a private entity, and we can't use city funds, but I can ask other corporations to actually donate if we want to make that a reality. So in closing, good night.
Good evening. I'm Mike McGinnis, District Seven's councilperson. I want to thank the many community members that came out for the Oak Hill Cemetery Walk that happened this last weekend. They've been doing it for a number of years. It's community members coming together. They had their, what was a high watermark for both turnout and fundraising, and the funds raised privately all go directly to caring for that historic cemetery, where thousands of people, many of your family members included, are laid to rest. And that's on a national historic site, but also a very vulnerable site. So in recent weeks, the mausoleum for the Osmond family, which in the past has been desecrated and violated when the, at the low point of security for the cemetery, that has been restored, the crumbling stones, that work, masonry has been repaired. There's also, due to the support of the Cemetery Walk from last year, been a visitor map that's installed. So when you enter those main stone pillars off of University Drive, you can get a sense of what are the sections. And in the year before that, installation of section markers. So very important improvements that you, the people of Pontiac and supporters of the cemetery, have made possible through collective action. I want to thank you for that. I want to thank the mayor. Both of us visited the Village of Oakland Woods and had a really, a great session with the senior citizens that call Oakland Woods home off of Opdyke in Pontiac's District Seven. I want to thank the mayor administration. I can confirm for you that we made thorough list of every single feedback in terms of traffic concerns, overgrowth, wildlife. We had a very extensive conversation about the land that's behind them, which is that land in subject here that currently is owned by Crown Enterprises. Their concerns about people hunting and shooting off guns back there over the past years, so it was really helpful information. And the administration, through the mayor's request, very quickly got on some overgrowth. It's a very small, small part, right across from the entrance to the Clinton River Trail on Auburn Hill side, but that was a big issue for seniors trying to get to the crossing at Hempstead and to be able to access the businesses there, but also for those that are driving to be able to have a clear access, and that was handled in a matter of days. Those seniors were noticed immediately, so I want to emphasize our gratitude for that improvement. And they also were very interested and enthused to hear about the possibility of doubling the land that the city owns right at their backyard so that we can have control of it. Because as it stands right now, with it being privately owned, it's a lot more vulnerable to be developed, to be turned into a factory as it's currently zoned, and that's a very real possibility in the future. So I'm really excited about the opportunity for us to double the people's land, our land in District Seven, right there in this vicinity, but I know we'll review it further. Finally, I'll just let you know, there was a fire last night at the Purdue School. The fire department deems that it was arson. It was intentionally set. It was isolated, it was able to be eliminated quickly, but they were able to reinforce the security challenges that that presents. So I wanted to give the administration opportunity to do some more research, but we will have that as a discussion item at next week's city council meeting. As with the facilities condition assessment, we want to know what's the true situation about all the property that you and I own, these city-owned facilities, and Purdue School is one of them. We, as the taxpayers of Pontiac, we own them, and we want to make sure we have a sense about what are all the challenges and opportunities for those facilities. And then, I realize my time is up, but the question was asked about Pride and Beautification Awards. We had a record number of responses. We had to wait to find out how many there were. There were over 700, and so the order of the signs was done weeks ago, and we are waiting for them to arrive. You know, as soon as they're in, you'll start seeing them sprout up, and we want to make sure that we follow through with our commitment where we shared that September would be when the signs are out. So that's our absolute goal. As long as we get them in our hands, they will be out there into the streets. And I want to thank the many residents who, at record rates, responded and submitted those nominations. We had a lot of positive feedback about how accessible and widespread those opportunities were.
What district had the most?
Home of Glenwood Plaza, District Six had the most nominations by a country mile. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
Go move.
Support.
I was moved by Councilman Parker, seconded by Councilman Nicholson, that we adjourn this evening's meeting. Sounds like some members of the audience want the meeting to keep going. So is there any further discussion on the motion to adjourn? With that, roll call and adjournment. Clerk Doyle.
Carrington.
Yes.
Goodman.
He's gone.
James.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Nicholson.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Rutherford.
Yes.
Six yeas, no nays.
Thank you. Have a beautiful night. Be safe. Don't know what the weather's doing out there, but it's-